Hello, good evening. Welcome to our Tuesday evening workshop. Yes, Tuesday. And appreciate all the department chairs being here and bearing with us. I know it's been quite a process, but we appreciate your assistance. And I appreciate my councilor's assistance, too. Thank you all for being here. So I just came, let me see if I'm saying this right. Haksamayak, it's basically happy holidays for Passover. I just came from the Seder at Temple Shalom where I have an excused absence to be at this meeting. And on my way out, they gave me matzo for everyone, by everyone, I mean the councilors. There's not quite seven here, but we could split them later. And yeah, happy Passover to all those celebrating. I understand we have somebody, Member Bowden, who would like to speak for a few minutes? Is that my con?
I think so. It's green.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much. Janet Bowden, Ward Two, and I'm also the school committee rep for Ward Two. I'm here tonight to address an issue that affects the safety of our children. Recently, a constituent emailed all of us, I believe you guys as well, not just the school committee, about a close call in Central Ave in front of Lewiston Middle School. It's no secret that the safety of our children is of the utmost importance, yet time and time again, we see drivers speeding down Central Ave, putting our children at risk. Too many children have been put in harm's way by drivers in a hurry, ignoring the buses with their red lights on, and failing to adhere to the speed limits in a school zone. This is unacceptable, and it must be addressed immediately. I urge you to consider the installation of speed bumps on Central Ave in front of Lewiston Middle School. The city of Lewiston has already had speed bumps near Bates College, at the high school, even though they're temporary, in mobile home parks, and even at Rupers on Sabata Street. These measures have been proven effective in slowing down traffic and ensuring the safety of pedestrians and especially our children. By installing speed bumps on Central Ave, we can effectively reduce the speed of vehicles passing by the middle school and create a safer environment for our children that walk to school and enter and exit their parents' vehicles. We need an effective traffic calming measure. I urge you to take action and install speed bumps on Central Ave in front of Lewiston Middle School. Please do not wait for a tragedy to occur before we address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Bowden, and thank you for your service. I thought we'd, so we have members of the school department here. Perfect. I think we're going to start off with you with questions about LCIP with the school request. If you can join us up here, that'd be great.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Superintendent Langlis is on his way. He's at the National Honor Society right now for the school, so he'll be here shortly.
Do, Josh, right?
He said have Josh stop without him.
Okay. Well, we're gonna proceed then. Can you please introduce yourself, sir? I moved the mic closer to you.
Absolutely. My name is Josh Bro, facilities director for the school department.
Thank you. And thank you for being here. I'm sure Superintendent Langlis will be joining us soon. Can you outline the asks here for the school department and just kind of briefly go over each one, if you could?
Absolutely. I don't have the exact number of requests that we have put in, but I've got them right here in front of me. So the first one is renovation slash redesign of the LHS science classroom and storage spaces. That, as it basically states here, those are original designs and from the original installation from the early 70s. For those labs, they're long overdue for a renovation and facelift. As it states in here, this is just to do the bare minimum, get the engineering done, do the obvious things, as well as potentially look at further restoration and renovations for those areas. We have things like failing water lines that are under slab. We have natural gas lines that are under slab that are leaking that we've had to shut off. So it's in various stages of disrepair and overdue for an upgrade, if you will. So that's that one. I believe 90 and 91 are tennis courts, and I believe we have some money in the current approved LCIPs. I don't have copies of those, but I believe they're...
These are the only ones that are actual going forward.
Okay. We can do that. That makes it easier. Forget that. We're not talking about that, apparently. So the next one would be the Geiger School Playground Expansion. That's requested from the principal. It would be a very large help for her, her staff, and the students to have a second playground to ease the congestion that is the playground during lunchtime, basically. So basically, I believe the plan would be to leave the existing playground there for the older students and then put in something smaller for the smaller or younger students, I should say. So that's basically where we're at with Geiger. Central, oh, grades, grade six and eight, central, as well as the central office expansion. Essentially, what that is, is we've outgrown the Dingly Building. It's very old, needs a lot of work. We recently just put a new roof on it for approximately about a million dollars. So we are investing in it and keeping it going, being good stewards of a historical building. It is on the National Historic Registry. But we've outgrown it. It needs a lot of work, and we're at a crossroads right now as far as to continue to invest in that building or start looking for other options. I don't think the intent is to ever get rid of the Dingly Building, although when superintendent gets here, he can correct me if I'm mistaken on that. I believe the intent is to try and change the usage of that building as well as continue to utilize it and then look for alternatives. So those are the, that's the primary focus of that project. Let me see if there's any other major points in here. Lots of privacy issues, no real great spaces. I mean, it's a school built in the late 1800s that's being used as an office building at this time. So I don't think it was really designed for the usage that it is. We're making do with it, but it's time for an upgrade on that as well. The district modulars at McMahon and Montello, that's pretty straightforward. Those are at the end of their useful life. They're having roof leaks, the flooring's peeling up. They're just, you know, it's time for new ones. We lack space. That's a common theme for anything to do with the school departments, whether that's for staff, students, storage, activities, you name it. So these modulars have been a great asset for the school department. They would continue to be, but it's time to start looking at replacing these modulars. Yeah. Last one is the facade entryways windows project. That is primarily a safety and security issue. We have a lot of aging windows, rotting window frames that are not going to be safe much longer, doorways that you can pull on and open, so the locks aren't holding. We've invested a lot of money in trying to limp things along, but it's time for a kind of a facelift on the facade to replace those windows and doors. Montello, Longley, those are the primary schools where we need those. As everybody knows, over the last couple of years, we've had a couple of break-ins at Longley with a lot of vandalism. I'm not saying that this is exactly from this, but these would be ways to prevent this from happening. I believe at least one of them, if not both of them, they were able to force open a window, get somebody inside, and then go prop open a door. So new windows would go a long way to fixing that. Replacing some doors would go a long way to fixing that. We're trying to keep people in those buildings safe, and those are our obstructions in being able to do that successfully.
Thank you. One question I had, and Counselor Harriman can fill in if I've, I can't remember this correctly, but I remember last year you had asked for money for modulars that were having some mold issues in Longley, but I don't, and we did not fund that. And so I don't see that here. I guess what was, whatever happened to that?
We did mold remediation in the one modular that was having some issues. Basically, what that was, was an ice dam at the corner of a couple of peaks in what we call the H Modular. It's the first modular. As you come into Longley, it's the very first one closest to the street that it's on. So that's been repaired. Ceiling's been repaired. We had to do some cleanup, things of that nature. We had to replace some flooring where it had rotted out. So that has been addressed. But again, the building is extremely old. Those problems are only going to continue to happen. So it's time to try and replace those as best we can.
Thank you. Comments, questions from the councilors? Counselor Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna go down the list. The science lab, currently usable, yes or no?
In use, yes.
Okay. Question I have is, you're gonna look at fixing it. Are we gonna get an evaluation whether it's worth to fix it? I hate to spend $50,000 or $60,000 for somebody to come in and engineer the whole thing and then determine that because the underlying lines are broken or damaged, that we can't go forward. Are we gonna bring somebody in for an evaluation and say, this is what we got. What do you think? Maybe water people, gas people, things of that nature, before we spend money on a contractor who's gonna say, oh, you can do all this if you can fix A, B, and C, and A, B, and C can't be fixed?
So to start your question, I would believe that there would always be a need for science classes and labs at the high school, to answer that. As far as the process of how things are going to be evaluated and where we're going to end up and what that plan is going to look at, those are the first steps. We obviously know what we want to have in those labs. We have some of the resources available to support those labs, but it's time, like you said, to do an assessment, to basically come up with the plan. What is it going to look like? Then do the engineering to make sure what we have in place can support what we're looking to do. Or do we have to kind of change and shift gears and figure that out once we analyze those utilities?
Have you gone out with an RFP or anything to get bids? I mean, $200,000 just seems like a number, you know? I mean, is that gonna cover everything? Is it gonna cover half? Is it gonna cover more and would have a little extra, you know? From my stand, my thought is we don't pay $200,000 for something to be engineered here in the city. That's, it's a lot of money for a couple classrooms. So I'm just curious, have we thought that process? Where did that number come from?
That number was a rough estimate we came up with for basically a starting point. But as it states in the request, this is to get the engineering and architecture design started with our initial attempt to bring it up to a certain standard. There potentially and very likely could be a second request for this as we gather more information. But to get this in as a placeholder as a starting point, to get that engineering work done, this is what this is trying to do, as well as improving the storage. The things that we know we have to do should be covered by this with the expectation that there will probably be a second request as we learn more. But this is, this is the starting point for what you were looking for.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Roy?
Thank you. Hey, how are you?
Good.
One question I have. How many classrooms are you talking about with us?
Eight.
Eight classrooms?
Yes.
Do we have enough students to fill eight that need that sort of?
As far as I know, yes. Jake would be better to answer that question when he gets here. He was the former principal there, so he would know a lot better as far as what curriculum is being done, past, present, and future. So he'd be better off explaining that. But I can tell you, if anybody's familiar with the high school, it's the left side of the C wing, and then we have three classrooms in the back C wing as well. Chemistry, physics, earth science, classes like that. As far as which class is in which classroom, I don't have that information, unfortunately. I don't get that deep into how things are going. They just asked me to try and fix it all.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. So this $200,000 is not only for the engineering, right?
Correct.
It's gonna do some renovation as well?
Yeah. Typical rule of thumb is about 10% of engineering, or 10% of a project cost would be engineering. So we're looking at roughly $20,000 worth of engineering and $180,000 worth of actual work.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Najin?
As far as the science labs are concerned, I know that there's potential danger currently due to the fact that you have gas lines that are shut off, all of these other pieces that, to be honest, I would imagine reworking the science labs is gonna be very expensive. But coming up with a plan and making it safe to use now, you feel that this number is appropriate for it?
I do. So just to speak on the gas side of things, we had a couple of classrooms in the back C wing reporting a gas smell. We were quick to identify that it was coming through the slab where the pipe came up to feed the gas feeds to turn on Bunsen burners. So we shut that off in what we call the chemical storage wing where, or chemical storage room where that gas first shows up, and we shut it off there because from there, it then goes back underground and feeds up through each of the workstations. So it is rendered safe now. We did work with staff, administration onsite at the high school to come up with portable Bunsen burners that run on little MAP gas cans. So there are workarounds around this, but anybody that spent any time in a science lab knows, having those utilities and those things available to you that are hard piped in and ready to go without having to worry about where's the portable Bunsen burner, or did my gas run out and now I have to go get another one right in the middle of running an experiment, those are challenges. Making sure the drains run, making sure the water's coming through fine, you know, all those things go a long way to making sure that that science room is usable and a teachable environment.
As a follow-up to that, so the $200,000 you believe would make, at least for the next couple of years, this space usable for?
It would give us some, some serious improvements, for sure, and it would be the start of the improvements. I don't know, like I said, I don't know what the final number will be. This is, this is the start of it with a seed number to basically get the engineering done, get the assessment done, do the low-hanging fruit that we know we need to do. And then from there, that's when we'll come back to this team and say, okay, now we have that information, and we know exactly what it's gonna take. And hey, our number is, is fine, and we can do what we need to do with the 200 grand, or we're gonna be making an additional request based on the information and the budget that's presented to us once that engineering work is done.
Thank you.
And when, should this be approved? When would we be looking to do this?
I forget. When do LCIPs typically get approved? When are they finalized?
Very soon.
May, June.
May, June. So...
Next fiscal year.
We would probably try and get somebody in over this summer, if that was the case, July, August area, to at least do the intrusive investigation inside the building. Our drawings are, again, from the 1970s, so they're accurate-ish. But there's nothing better than getting boots on the ground and getting up into the ceilings and digging down underneath, you know, the wings and seeing what's where, what's needed. We're gonna have to pull staff together, ask for their input. I believe Mr. Reisfelder is the genesis of this request. He's one of the science teachers onsite at the high school. So he would probably take the lead, as well as other science teachers coming in to tell us, you know, what, what are your needs? What are your wants? How do we, you know, close that gap between those two and get what you need, and then start working on what, what do you want?
Further questions, comments from the council on any of these items? Counselor Chinam?
Thank you. Given that the LCIP wouldn't be approved until the end of, it's for fiscal '25, which means that the money would be available after July 1st. Is there a thought in your mind that these improvements and retrofits and repairs would be accomplished in that year?
In FY '25?
Yes.
I believe we could get the engineering work done and start planning things. I don't know if we would creep into what would become FY '26 with some of this work, but the intent would be to try and get it done as quick as we can so we can be in use for the students as soon as it can be.
Okay. I just wanted to make certain that you don't contemplate having these, this work done in time for the start of the school year this coming fall.
No, I don't believe that's the intent.
Okay.
There might be things like purchasing of chemical storage closets, things of that nature that need to be upgraded, hard, or maybe not, but soft assets that we could use and put into implementation immediately. But by no means are we trying to, this summer, gut those rooms, redesign them, put in new tables, new chairs, you know, interactive smartboards, which are mostly in, but, you know, anything like that. That, those are long-term things. If we have to redo plumbing, that's all summer work. So that would probably be the summer of what would be, what, '25, when we'd be tackling that, doing the engineering work this summer of '24.
Okay. To be honest, it sounds to me, and I'm very much in favor of getting these science labs up to code, up to par, up to snuff, whatever you want to get them up to. I want to get them up there. However, it sounds to me as though this isn't, is a half-baked plan, that we're gonna spend some money for engineering and find out what we need. We're gonna, we know we have some chemical storage cupboards and that sort of thing. I see in the LCIP that previous construction and researching equipment was the basis for this estimate of $200,000. I've been told by people who think they know that $200,000 is nowhere near enough to bring these labs up to what we need them to be for our students. So my concern is that we've just picked a number, and obviously, we're looking very diligently now at trying to reduce the amount of money that we're going to assess the taxpayers for, trying to reduce the amount of money that we need to borrow. So there's a conflict here between, we don't have what appears to be a well-defined plan to spend this $200,000, and as much as we may want to do this and get those classrooms where they need to be, we've got the conflicting element of where's that money gonna come from. So for my own self, I would much prefer to see a more concrete, stepped-staged plan on, we are going to allocate $35,000 to do the initial analysis for what is needed, what needs to be repaired. The gas lines under the floor need to be slip-lined or replaced completely, that sort of thing. And then come back to us with, this is what we need based on the definitive studies and the analysis that we've done.
I wouldn't disagree with that, but I think our plan is, is very close to what you asked for. We did use some previous construction history and cost to look at what it would cost to renovate those. But until we actually sit down with an architect and an engineer and give them what our needs are, then it's always gonna be a moving target. So we have to start somewhere. This is our attempt to start somewhere. Where we end up, that is definitely an unknown at this point. It might come in less than this. Doubt it. Might come in over than this, more than likely. But this is the start of that. So that's exactly what we're trying to do with this project. And it may evolve over years to become something larger. It might be something that we slowly phase in based on what programming the high school wants to offer its students. Those are things that we are hoping to do with, with the start of this project with this money.
Let me ask you what, how your plans would change if the council said, we'd like to do this, but we want to give you $100,000 instead of $200,000 for this year?
I am not brave enough to answer that question without Jake by my side. I do respect the attempt, though.
Good answer.
Counselor Glenn, did you have something?
This is just general for all of us here at the council. I'd like to think that tonight, because we have a lot on our docket and agenda, that we feel comfortable with something, at any time, we can ask for thumbs up or thumbs down. And if we get four, we stop conversation and move on. We spent a lot of time at the last meeting beating a dead horse where we knew it was gonna pass. Is everybody acceptable to that?
Yes. Yeah, I'm mostly acceptable to that. I do want councilors to feel like they can ask questions and get all their questions answered. I think that's important.
I don't disagree, but sometimes we get off on a different trail, talking about a lot of items that might have tied in at some point, other than the specific item. That's my concern.
It's an occupational hazard, so, yeah.
Not if we do thumbs up.
Counselor Najin, did you have something?
Just to piggyback on Counselor Glenn's comment before I ask my question, I would be fine with that if everybody had an opportunity to speak. That's all. The question that I have is, do we have bonded funds sitting in the CI, sitting in CIP pools for the school department for projects that have been canceled so far? Or do we have things in the pipeline that are waiting to be bonded, that have already been approved, that have then been canceled? So my question is, do we have a slush fund at all?
So they have come to council, I believe it was, I'm not sure if it was January or December, and reallocated some projects to go to another project that came in over. So they constantly look at their projects and see where it falls and how it ends. I just updated them right before the budget, because I do a reconciliation for them for the spreadsheet, as I do for ours, on what they had for projects. So I believe that they are up to date, but that would be more of a Jake question when he gets here.
Further questions about any of the other items? Counselor Sol, yes?
So Geiger Playground, they currently have a playground?
They currently have two, actually.
And they want another playground?
They do. And they do have the space for it. It is built very well for that.
Is it something that they can put on next year's budget, where there's already two, and you're asking $200,000 for the, the science lab?
Again, I would probably want to defer that to Jake when he gets here, the superintendent, to see as far as what our priorities would be.
I mean, I want them to have playgrounds, but I think a science lab would be a little more important where they already have playgrounds. So, okay. Thanks.
Counselor Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for what you're doing. I think at this point, it'd be better to have him step away till Jake gets here, because we're gonna get, Jake's probably on all the answers to cut. He's, he don't have the authority to do that, and we're just gonna be, keep going on a list. We might as well wait for Jake, if you all don't mind. It's up to you guys.
Yeah, no, I was thinking the same thing. Unless we have further technical questions...
But you can't, you know, you can't cross it out.
I can only go so far.
Yeah. Do we have any other technical questions for Josh? Okay. So we'll have you step away for a second, but don't run off. Sit tight and find out when Jake's gonna be here.
Will do. Thank you.
And Director Gonya, we're gonna pick back up with Fund Balance and Public Works. And you brought all the folders. This is perfect.
So we're gonna start on page 35, line 13, City Hall.
If you both can introduce yourselves and then take it away.
Louis Turcotte, Facilities Manager.
Kevin Gonya, Director of Public Works.
So we're looking at, well, line 13.
Line 13.
We're gonna have to put the mic close to whoever's talking.
So line 13 is for City Hall repairs to equipment, $45,000 sprinkler clearing.
Last year, we found out during a sprinkler inspection that we have a line blocked on the alley side of the building, and so it's basically temporarily disabled. So we've made all arrangements. We're considered safe because it's partial blockage, but it definitely needs to be done. We struggled with finding somebody to do the work, and we've got a company lined up. We've rehabbed some of our sprinkler inspection process and everything else, and so we'll get the, the funding is pretty much, I don't know, emergency, semi-emergency funding, because it's absolutely necessary, for public safety.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Phil Gill.
Counselor Chinam?
Thank you. Is this an annual inspection that the sprinkler system undergoes, and have these blockages been discovered elsewhere before?
No. This is the first blockage. In six years I've been here, this is the first time we've discovered a blockage. But yes, the inspections that happen, I think were four times a year. They do inspections in various levels of the system. Entire system is completely inspected over the course of the year.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just wondering if this is going to be an annual, $45,000 seems like a lot of money to clear a pipe, but...
It is.
It's a little more complex than just running a snake through it, I would imagine.
Absolutely. Part of the reason the pipe's clogging is because it's rusting inside. The particles are collecting. The finer stuff gets down into the heads of the sprinkler system. So we're looking at replacing lines, fittings, and heads.
Thank you.
Just on 13, 14, and 15, just to cover this, do we look at any grant opportunities as far as security within City Hall and then also historic tax credits when we're doing certain updates?
We have, like, done the energy efficiencies, working with the gentleman on projects, much larger projects than these sizes. I don't know if he would look at smaller projects like this. Usually, it's much larger energy efficiency projects that we work with them.
Thank you.
Line 14, access doors, security system. We started the access control... Line 14, access doors, security system, we started the access control project upgrades in the city here a little over a year ago, that's been moving along, kind of evolving, it was the first access control project that we've done, and since we installed that, staff has said, "Why didn't you do this door, this door, bathroom door, you know, council chamber halls?" And so, we've looked at it, we discussed it with admin, and we've agreed on six doors we'd like to upgrade, and that's what that would, upgrade from the key system.
So, these were, these were doors that didn't include, get included in the initial install?
Correct.
I see. Counselor Chidham, did you have a question?
Thank you, I'm pondering, $20,000, the doors are secure, they work with keys, and this would replace them with pass cards, magnetic cards, like the two or three doors on the outside of the building?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't support that.
Counselor Nagin?
Just quickly, if it's a pass card system, you can tell who's coming in and out of the building at different times?
Correct.
At all exits and entrances?
So, the goal, these doors would allow us to move on to the next step and help eliminate as many keys, from handing out keys to the staff as possible. The reason this started was the keying system was antiquated, the, we use a Medco key system, and the patent actually expires on those, and as that expires, your radius of security of who can use that key pattern, the identical patterns get smaller and smaller. More of the biggest concern is the exterior doors, and that's what we took care of first, but the whole theory kind of flows across all keys, trying to monitor that.
So, if a city counselor, for instance, decided to let themselves in at, I don't know, like 11:30 at night to go to the council snack box, we would know that?
Yes.
Thanks.
I don't see a problem with that. Well, and I know the, you know, the Medco key system adds, you know, it's certainly quite complicated and cumbersome, and the key access is infinitely easier for staff. It's also not free to give people Medco keys, they are in fact quite expensive.
Yes.
Further comments about that?
Okay, I guess, I believe we're on item 15, repair to two different areas of the City Hall roof, and we're asking 48,000. Last year, we had an area on the backside towards the alley, relatively large area with a shingled section of the roof, and because of its age, wind got to it, blew off an area, started leaking. We're containing leaks with tarps in the attic right now and taking care of it, so we're not getting any damage, and then, since then, an area on the front corner of Park and Pine has, have developed the same issue. We looked at, we are in the process of looking at insurance claim, but I would suspect that due to the age of the shingles, it's going to get denied, but that's what it is, so, and it's been a process, it's not easy finding people to get up on this roof and work.
Counselor Chidham?
Thank you, these are asphalt shingles, not slate shingles?
Asphalt.
Asphalt shingles.
We do have, I think we have four roof types on this roof, but these are just luckily asphalt shingles.
Okay, well, I don't see that we have a choice here, we can't have water pouring down through the building, and we can't have a second largest city protecting its City Hall with tarpaulins either, so I appreciate your efforts to date, but I think this is a no-brainer.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Hello?
Could we get a thumbs up or thumbs down on the access door security system?
Well, and I was just coming to that administrator, I kind of want to do things in this section, I think we're all okay with the sprinkler clearing? Yep, yep, okay, and then, how do we feel about the access door security system? And then, I assume we have consensus on the roof?
So, line, line 16?
What's that?
Line 16.
Let's do it.
These are repairs, pressure washing is basically, is maintenance that we try to do, we rotate through the five garages each year, or attempt to, to get pressure washing done, to help remove sand, salt stuff airborne, guano, bird stuff, from molten steel to help preserve and protect it. It's not necessarily a priority, last year at Oak Street, we asked for 13,000, but we ended up using, reallocating the funds to do stair repairs, it's became a priority over that, so, we'd like to address that this year.
The pressure washing, you mean?
Yes, pressure washing.
Yes, okay. Counselor Chidham, did you have something?
This is a pressure, a pressure washer, basically a piece of machinery?
Yes, we hire a professional, a commercial company to come in with a large.
Oh, it's a contract then for a company to do this cleaning, okay, and it was not done previously?
No, it's, we're probably at the six to seven year mark for the Oak Street garage.
And how frequently would you recommend that the structure be pressure washed?
Right now, each garage, every five to six years has been adequate.
And one contract will handle just, is this just for the Oak Street?
Correct.
Garage? So, effectively then, we're looking at another rolling roughly $13,000 a year?
Yes.
To keep up with that maintenance schedule?
Correct.
Okay, I think, I'd like to see that go in the operations budget in future years. Thank you.
Counselor Nagin?
Just to state that I think the condition of the parking garages is very important, and so, the pressure washing as well, and though it's a structural issue, but at the same time, when you, when you think about putting the $13,000 a year into the operating budget, does it make sense at all to buy equipment and have staff do it, or no? And then, because the other question would be, we could do it more often, and we could do it with other things, and so, I just want to kind of, you don't have to answer that right now, I just want to put that out, that possibly we might be better off not hiring outside in order to do, in certain areas of downtown, we know that we have issues with the conditions of sidewalks, the conditions of parking garages, public spaces that do need to be pressure washed on occasion, and so, just a thought on that.
Director Gagne, I assume that Public Works owns pressure washers?
We do, we've got one in the garage, we've got some smaller units, I don't know that we have some of our, you could deem them as pressure washers, or pretty specific equipment on the front of our vectors, and we, I think we've got some, you know, hoses with pressurized tanks for watering, that we don't.
Yeah, I mean, the way I'm reading this is, you know...
We do have one larger unit, but the only problem is it's only really set up to defrost culverts, you know, there's no way of injecting chemicals in it, we'd have to modify the whole thing to, you know, induce some sort of cleaners or anything into the system.
Right, and the way I'm reading this is that, you know, beyond having the equipment, you're talking about quite a bit of staff time to do the entire garage, yeah, so I think that's also an issue.
We can definitely look at it in the future for cost comparison.
How's the council feeling about this?
Want to jump down? Let's go to...
What number are we on now?
We're going to go to line 24, do you want to stay with buildings? While I go up here?
They want us to go on.
For Public Works? Okay.
What was that, Director?
Trying to coordinate while I have Louis up here, if I'm pulling the next person up, so, we're going to go with line 24, highway, public safety equipment. Not you.
Fifty, fifty-nine.
It's $3,800 for replacement of work zone signs. Megan Bates? Yep. This is normal stock, I believe, that we were replacing.
Megan Bates, Deputy for Maintenance and Operations, yes, that's a portion of replacing what we need to in our inventory, so, when we make a purchase of signs, you know, parking sandwich boards, tripods, we generally take like 25% out of highway, 25% out of water, 25% out of sewer, and stormwater, so that's a portion to replace some of our inventory. We also have a rapid response trailer that we got a grant for, I'm trying to remember, I think it was back around 2010, maybe a little earlier than that, and our December storm, we lost a lot of inventory, it just frankly disappeared, we put barricades up and cones, and due to the flooding, we were able to capture some of it, but we did lose a significant amount during that storm.
Thank you, Counselor Chidham, Counselor Nagin?
Just really quickly, there was some work done on Riverside recently, and the tripods were in bad shape, so, possibly we could ask Lisbon and Topson for our equipment back, but ultimately, yeah, it's normal wear and tear. Just as a quick kind of concept, as a business, right, like you have a valuation of equipment that then depreciates over a period of time, do we look at that at all as a municipality, basically thinking about how things get replaced?
We just look at overall condition and overall stock, depending on type of year, it's, when we had power lines come down and the branches come down, we're typically putting out cones and signs, following the manual uniform traffic control devices, trying to lane closures, keep, so we can deploy a lot, and then, depending on what happens to those, we do try to recover as much as we can in condition, so.
The only comment, follow that up, was we're still under an emergency declaration, I believe, and so, it's possible that we could look to the state for some funding for equipment as well?
We do leverage claim, claim things that are lost or broken, depending on what happens, so, yep, and we'll continue to do that.
Counselor Chidham?
Yes, again, I would like to see this in the operations budget, I'm assuming that replacement of traffic control devices like these temporary signs is an ongoing annual expenditure.
Every year.
So, I'd like to see these moved into the operations budget, give us a better handle on what it actually costs to run Public Works.
Thank you, I just had a question on the next item, the message board?
Yep.
Is that one of the electronic message boards that's on a trailer?
Yes, it is, we have three right now, one each on the main arterials, this would be an extra one, in the about one broke down, it wouldn't be in storage, we would put it in a fourth location. They are extremely popular for city staff and for our residents to get information out there, whether it be safety during winter operations, the numerous events that we have around the city, you know, like for our voting, that sort of thing, so, they've been a great service to the city.
All right, thanks.
Anything else you'd like to add, Director Gagne, about item number 25?
Nope.
I guess if you can just keep proceeding on those.
All right, item number 26, public safety equipment, $2,400 jersey barricades, these are the concrete barricades that you see, this, right now, it's on the bridge, that the contractors are using to ensure safety of their trench, so, those are things that we do not buy, we don't put them out there lightly, these are used, close off roads, close off immediate safety areas, as well as operations at our operations center, so.
Counselor Chidham, this buys two, three jersey barriers, I would imagine?
Approximately four.
Four? Oh, they're cheaper than I thought, but this is not an annual expense?
We've typically asked for some monies for these every year.
Every year?
Yes.
Okay, again, operational's budget, please.
Item number 26, 27, $3,000 for lifting chains, this is the highway division, so, this is all coming out on the tax side, so, you know, water and sewer wise, replacement of lifting chains in their accounts, in their divisions, so that's why it's in here, and I'd probably expect you'd want out of operations.
You guessed.
All right. And this is a normal maintenance wear and tear item, we try to keep those because they need to be certified with the tags for Department of Labor on an inspection, as well as ensuring lifting safety is different than pulling. Item number 28, other betterments, $45,000 retaining wall at 23 River Road, replace the existing wall. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that area, it is a city wall within city right-of-way, it is crumbling, I do have a picture. So, it's a small precast block wall, similar to what we have at some of our other back of walks, this is maintaining that edge of road, I believe it was widened and put there, and it's at end of life on that retaining wall.
Thank you, Mayor, you looking to replace with the same look?
Correct.
Could we go with a larger stone and save money? I mean, River Road, it's not like it's tourist traction running by there every day, I mean, four-foot fancy front might be a lot quicker, A and B, less expensive?
We will see what we can get for the price, I'm not sure on how much those, those larger blocks typically have a, where this is a driveway, we'd want to put some fabric behind it to ensure we're not losing gravel and causing an issue, but if there's a different type of wall that would be similar height, and we could save some money, we would.
Yeah, you know, I just think it's, if you had it running the whole street, it'd be different, but it's, I drove by there, it's just one area that we did at some point that maybe we can still make it attractive, I'm not looking at flat concrete that, you know, somebody wouldn't appreciate or affect the value of the home, with something that might be less expensive and less timely to install.
Definitely consider it.
Right, thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Nagin?
Just out of curiosity, like a cast-in-place concrete, you know, like four-inch or six-inch concrete with rebar, would that not be something that you do here?
You've got probably more in labor costs to excavate, form up, pour, than strip down, the thing is, most, you know, local, small contractors can get bid on this, we don't need a large contractor to get one there with special equipment.
The second question I have on that is, how long did this one last, just out of curiosity? Does anybody know?
I'll ask our city engineer when the road widening happened.
That one that's there is actually the second one that was there, we put that in probably only about 15 years ago, now we are using a newer MDOT-approved salt-resistant block, that the salt doesn't attack like those older blocks do, so, it should last much longer this time.
All right, item number 29, line number 29, other betterments, $10,000 ground protection mats?
Yes, we would like to have those protection mats for, to protect our roads when we have an excavator, track excavator out there, we'd also use it for the right-of-way and people's property when we're doing tree work, and the branches fall down hard in a yard, and here recently, we're doing brush collection, so we put the riggers out, and it causes a lot of pressure, I was surprised really to see what the lawn looked like after that we lifted the riggers up, so, that would help that also.
New purchase? I mean, it's, I think it's something we may have had in stock, but it's not an annual purchase on this item, from what I understand.
Counselor Nagin?
Are we going to do a thumbs up and down on all these, or are we going to wait till we go through?
My thought is we would go through the section and see if anyone had any concerns about any of them, and then we can do it that way.
Didn't want to lose it, that's all, thank you.
Yeah, no, we're good. Counselor Longchamp, did you have something?
No.
Oh, okay, let's proceed, Director.
Thirty, all right, item 30, guardrails, $32,000. All right, item 30, guardrails, 32,000 repair in place. I believe these are various areas. I'm not sure we have them designated.
No, not, they're not designated. This is just one, there are accidents and people hit the guardrail and they need to be replaced. So oftentimes, these are hit and run, but we do also see claims come in from time to time.
And these are replacing either midsections, which are easier and cheaper, or the terminal ends, which are special safety breakaway ends that don't cause the driver to be fatally wounded, so. All right, next, number 31, other betterments, local share of Main Street and East Avenue and Bradbury Road. This is resurfacing, and $105,550.
Did you want to explain anything about that first?
It's the 10% match for those MDOT funds to leverage those projects for resurfacing.
So the whole project is about a million?
Correct.
Yeah. Counselor Chinam.
Bradbury Road is a DOT, eligible for DOT funding? I know we have $35,000 for engineering on Bradbury Road, which sorely needs it in the LCIP for this year, and then there was money anticipated for next year for reconstruction based on the engineering. So I'm a little confused to see it here.
That is the 35,000 for engineering that Tracy moved from the LCIP and I guess lumped it in with those other two items.
Okay.
It's not a DOT road.
No, I wouldn't think it would be. Okay, so the 35 has moved out of the capital improvements plan and put into the fund balance expenditures. Is that, that's okay?
That's correct.
That's my understanding.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Last item, number 32, other betterments, resurfacing, $32,500 for general work.
What does that mean?
We talked about, I believe, we talked about the patching areas where we'll go in with our contractor and do a better grind and repave in an area that's problematic with potholes versus just throwing more patch in there.
Counselor Chinam.
Is this a contract, that we have a contractor?
We have, so we do have some ability within our workforce. We do have a grind mill machine. We do have a hot box. So depends on resources and the size of the area. If we're talking about Main Street, night work, we'll typically, in the past, we've put that out to the contractor. Other small streets and areas where we have the time, we've done that work.
This wouldn't replace all coal patch in the city, though, would it?
No, during the winter months, we're out there, coal patch is just that. It's an emergency patch, so we don't have people wrecking their cars and getting in accidents. So it's wet, it's icy, it's frozen. We're going to put coal patch in. On a drier day and a warmer day, we'll try to go out there and do a better job at patching that, and we can do a better job, and we'll be looking to do that. So general patching is just that, through the winter and spring, those areas, if it's an emergency, then, you know, we've done some areas more for the utility side of digging something out, grinding something out and get a better patch in there. Yep, but this won't replace that.
Further questions about these items? Does anyone have any concerns about these items, or any single item? I guess we're good to proceed. Counsel Harriman, did you have something?
I was just giving thumbs ups up.
Oh, okay.
Next line, item 30.
We're going to, if we can take, I noticed we have Superintendent Lingless has arrived. If we can just take a break from you two just for a second, and I'm going to bring up Superintendent and Josh back up. You know, Superintendent, if it was me, I'd be tardy, but since it's the superintendent, you know.
He gets the right of his own time, he says.
Come on down.
My delay was excused by my wife.
Do you mind using your?
My delay was excused by my wife and daughter, who was in the National Honor Society this evening.
Congratulations. Counselors, we had some questions. What were the? Counselor Sol.
The Geiger Playground. There's two, I think you said, and you're asking for $100,000 for an additional playground?
Can you move the mic closer to you?
Is that something that can go into the next budget?
So we've pushed this, I think, now three times. It's a big request from Geiger in and around that the secondary playground area really doesn't have suitable equipment. So they have safety concerns, they have usage concerns, and the age of the kids and who can use which playground spaces, so that's.
So is one of the two playgrounds going to be removed? Are they, they're not safe, is that what you said?
It's really about how they want to move kids around and have more activity throughout the day. And because of the design of the playgrounds, they don't really fit the balance of the kids being outside and when.
Okay, thank you.
And if you look at one of the fenced-in areas, it's very limited as far as what's there. It's more of a space than it is a playground.
Okay, thank you.
Josh wants to add to that.
As I stated before, we do have two playgrounds there now. They're age-specific. One is for the smaller children in the kindergarten, first grade age range. The other one is designed specifically for kids five to 12. So the challenge at Geiger right now, as I stated before, was not having enough outdoor space for the students to go out, which causes lunch to get backed up because there's nowhere to send the kids when they're done lunch. So it's to alleviate a lot of those issues associated with lunch and playground time, or recess time, if you will.
Counselor Glant.
So will no one be generic from age, from, take you through kindergarten all the way through age 12? So it's multi-use, or you then specifically put one in for a particular group, which then may not solve your lunch problem for the other group?
I believe the intent is to do not a specific targeted age. It would be more open for everybody to use and just additional safe space to send students after lunch without having the logjam on the one larger kid playground that we have. Again, designed for five to 12 years old.
Counselor Nagy.
I'm going to go down through these, actually. But, so LHS Science Labs, we already had the conversation about. Geiger Playground, I believe that's like the, pretty much the elementary commuter school, like basically the amount of students that attend there are brought in, like from other areas of the city, correct? Like what is the population? I guess the question I'm asking is, what's the population that would normally go to that school versus the folks that are sending their kids to Geiger from other parts of the city? Do you have an idea?
I guess I'm not sure what you mean. So we have districts for our school populations, and so students that go to Geiger live in a specific districted area.
Unless they're requested to be, to be sent to Geiger.
So we have in-district transfers, but we have hundreds of those that go to all schools, and it's usually based on daycare, family need, things of that nature.
Okay. The office expansion project at Dingly, is that something that could possibly wait one year?
Yeah, it is. Josh gave me a heads up that there might be an idea in City Ministry of Malley that might be looking to prioritize these if you had to. They're all important, and this is a narrowed list, obviously, of about 30 things that we didn't bring because obviously there's some constraints. So if I had to prioritize these, I would say district modular upgrades at McMahon and Montello would be first. And that's really about safe space and things that might need renovations and or replacement. Two would be the science labs. Three would be the district entry and facade, Longley and Montello. As you know, we've had a number of break-ins. Some of that's due to just old infrastructure that is easily breakable and allows entrance so that some of those funds are designed to harden some of that exterior and provide safe travel lanes and things like that. I'd actually put the Geiger Playground at four and the office expansion project at five. But part of that is a six to eight piece. It's a discussion that has started, but it's been some start and stops on it with looking at, could we do school a bit differently in Lewiston as we project forward with both curricular ideas, but also all the development that we're seeing in Lewiston, which is, I think, a real positive to our community, but it's going to bring hundreds more students likely to our community. So we were looking at models instead of having, this is very much what-if, but having a school that focused primarily on, say, pre-k to, that whole school was that, instead of having five elementary schools that served the whole span up to sixth grade. So that was, part of that design and effort around that space and the central office piece was kind of a blend of studies and ideas and what-ifs and how would we try to quantify that? We'd probably have to bring someone in to look at what that would play out as. It's, enrollments are very hard to project, and enrollment studies can be expensive and often wrong. So I try to thread that needle a little bit, but that's the idea with the six, eight and central office.
Fair enough. So the McMahon and Montello district modular upgrades, and you've rated them number one, my question would be, just like the Longley ones that were remediated, is there any opportunity? I know that McMahon is currently underutilized as far as an overall school system, but I know that there are plans to
Yes.
develop. So if you could just speak to that.
Yeah, so, and actually, I'm going to spin the mic to Josh here in a second because I think he just walked it recently, the modules over there for potential upgrades. But the space-wise, McMahon enrollment is down, and we talked about this a little bit at the budget presentation, because of the aging community and it's just that piece of town, and that's where those students go to school. But we are looking at expanding some special purpose programs there. So the space that we're looking at, that Josh just walked through with some other folks, is space that we're looking to expand in that would be designed for those programs. Part of that need is the modular, which they were deterred from using because of a mold issue that dated back, that was cleaned, and it's still a battle because of disrepair. And if you want to add to, there were some opportunities to refurbish, I think.
Yeah, as I stated before, we did have some issues out there. We've been limping along the floors, the roof, the walls. Flooring is coming up, carpets are old. It's all of those things. They're just at the end of their useful life, and the need for more space at all our buildings, like I said, never goes away. So this would just assure us that for the next 20 years at least, those spaces would be available for the students and staff regardless of how they look at it. Today's use is, we're looking at some specialty programming. It's always changing, as I've learned over the six years I've been here. So the need will never change, the use might, but the need won't change, and it's time to replace those.
And thank you for the lifespan, because that was a question I was going to ask. And just on the entryways and facade improvements, does Longley have an alarm system? You don't have to answer that publicly.
It does not. We are installing sensors that will trigger alarms, and we do have cameras there.
Okay, thank you. Those were my questions.
Counselor Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Superintendent, thank you. One of the questions that I do have is, talking about expanding the special needs programs maybe to those trailers and stuff like that, I noticed that in the budget before when we talked, you cut a lot of special needs teachers and stuff like that. What are we going to be doing with those students if we do go forward with those?
It's a great question. So we're trying to find a balance between what positions do we include in the budget that we think we have a potential of hiring versus the whole load of what we think we really should have as it relates to expanding those programs and looking at a multi-year ramp up, if you will, to providing more services. Modulars is part of the conversation at Montel, excuse me, at McMahon, but we're looking at using part of a wing as well that exists in the building and then expanding that over time. So the reductions of the list that we shared of the positions that have been cut, some additional positions that are new to expand that programming are in the budget. Those were just, I call it the Jakeism, essentially. It was my thinking on, I think we probably could hire three or four of these, but we're not going to fund seven, and so we need to cut three of them. And so that's how I came to that work with the school committee, was really on the labor market and do we think we can hire them? I think if we could, we could probably ask for them and bring them, bring those students back home sooner and at a faster process, but I don't think it's real to hire all of those specific positions, but we do have additional positions in the budget that we're requesting to support that effort.
Okay, I was just making sure, like, we weren't going to put them into mainstream to further burden, well, I wouldn't say burden, sorry, that's the wrong thing.
No, but I understand what you're saying. The high-needs students present high needs, and so we are looking to support that with additional staff and reallocating some staff from other facilities that we currently have. So some of the reductions list we shared were, when the school committee got the first version of the budget, it had all of those positions in it. This is what it would take to really go after that capacity. And then we looked at the real constraint of, you know, our community can only fund so much, and we appreciate all the resource we do get, but we want them to be mindful of, if we can't hire these, and we know that, let's do what we can responsibly and not ask for extra.
And I understand that. Thank you. That was part of the email. I was going to send you that, I never sent you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Chinam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're looking at taking some significant cuts in these capital improvements programs. We've already made quite deep cuts so far. My goal is to reduce an additional 1.6 million from the total bonded amount. That represents about a 80%, I'm sorry, a 20% reduction. So my question to you, Superintendent, is if we say we will authorize 1.4 million instead of the 1.786, and let you decide where that money would best go and whether the projects could be trimmed back or eliminated, I wonder how that would, how you would feel about that? Not good, obviously, but these are tough choices that we have to make here.
Yeah, no, and I can appreciate that. I do like to point out, just for conversation, and I think I can kind of do this as you ask, schools have asked for 1.7 million, for 1.78 million of a 59 or 57 million LCIP request. We have 11 buildings, 5,600 kids, staff, so that the infrastructure-wise, it is a pretty small number by comparison of assets to the city. When we bond things through LCIP, the payments are in our budget, so that's debt service that the Lewiston Public Schools takes care of. I'm not blind that that's taxpayer dollars, but it is a function of the school budget, so it's not a, I think sometimes people think it's separate of, at least for the school purposes, part of that. But if I had to reduce, I would go back to the order that I had shared, and I would look to probably find ways to shave off of the modular upgrades if at all possible in the entryways. Do what we can to get that lab up to snuff and look for other funding, but I would, I probably step away from four and five for this year and look to reduce to get to that number if we had to.
Thank you, Superintendent.
You said you were comfortable with the grade six through eight and central office expansion project being delayed?
I understand the financial limitations and the resources, so comfortable wouldn't necessarily be the word I would use, but I think.
Sorry, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth.
No, and I would think you're
Maybe I misunderstood you.
Just from a constraint perspective, I understand that there's a lot of needs, and I think that we could find a way. And part of our budget presentation also was to look at using some fund balance to create a reserve for facility purposes, and that may be a way to try to do some of this work. So I guess what I'm trying to think on the spot is, I think we could navigate that either by delay or if the reserve is approved in the referendum process, to go that approach if we were in a pinch for those items.
Okay. I mean, based on what you were telling us about, so right now, we have kids at Geiger that, since there's no room for them to go, we hold them in the lunchroom or something?
More or less. It just creates a jam because there's nowhere for the kids to go with the age differences and supervision and all of those things.
Right, yeah. I mean, I don't think we can not do the science labs. It sounds like we really, and the Geiger Playground addition has been delayed how many years now?
I believe it's three budget cycles that it's been delayed.
Right, and, yeah, and I, you know, I just don't like the idea of, like, kids, like, just being, like, held up arbitrarily just because there's no place for them to go. Yeah, and I'd be fine with the district modular upgrades and the entryway project. Further questions or comments from the council? project. Further questions or comments from the council?
So, do we wanna do a thumbs up?
Thumbs up, thumbs down?
Yeah, let's do, yeah. How do we feel about the, uh, oh, there was a, one question, I don't know which counselor asked it, but, uh, the science labs, how many science labs were there? And there, there was questions about demand. Do we, do we really need all these science labs?
It, it's eight, eight science labs, or classrooms, I should say.
Thank you. Further questions before we start going through these items?
Uh, question of procedure, Mr. Mayor. Um, I had suggested reducing the overall, uh, 1.786 million, uh, and leaving the decision as to where those cuts would be made to the school department. Um, I'm wondering if that's an appropriate methodology?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I mean, that's kind of, you know, what, so we have like, you know, seven hundred for the district modular upgrades, you know, can you do it for like six fifty, six hundred? I think that's, that's difficult to quite a answer here. I'd, I'd much rather go through project by, by project, rather than just arbitrarily, um, cutting some amount just, just because we came up with that amount. Superintendent, did you have thoughts?
Just as, um, from, from a place of approvals, uh, these projects have to be approved by the school committee and also the city council, because they're LCIP. Um, i- if we had a number, a- again, I think we could work with that and just get that back to you. If that's the number you want to work with, I would certainly want the school committee to chime in. Um, but I, I think either method would work. I also know that, um, by way of process down the road, there is, uh, again, there's a function, and it, it's multi-step, and it requires everyone's approval, but if we need to reallocate a little, cause one of these items is a little short, but we have funds elsewhere, you know, that's through due process permissible. So, if, if we came out of here with numbers, we could find ways to, to get these projects as done as possible.
Counselor Najin?
And if you could just quickly, again Supervisor, uh, Superintendent, um, explain, when we bond for the schools, the payments are then adopted to the school budget going forward? Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. So, we have debt service, um, it's, we have both debt service and our revenue sheet, but also, uh, is in our expenses. So, we, we take on that mortgage, if you will. But it's, it's still taxpayer dollars that funds the school budget. So, I, I just don't want people to think that there's a tree out there with money on it.
Oh, no, one hundred percent. I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying that, that ultimately this will raise, we know this will raise the school budget, right?
Yes.
Um, but at the same time, it isn't in the same pot of, of money.
Correct. And, and it doesn't become the burden of another part of the city's budget. It lands with the school.
Counselor Chittam?
Thank you. Director Roy, um, is the school department subject to the same limitations on bonding that the city council is, i.e. the eighty percent rule?
The eighty percent rule includes the school.
That, that applies across the board?
That's why in that, on that page is in the calculation.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, all right, we'll start down the list. Uh, how do we feel about the science labs? Uh, Counselor Glant, did you have something?
Can we offer up his first choice and then go the list? Cause that might eliminate everything.
How, how, I guess, how does the rest of the council feel about the idea of just giving some bottom line number for all of these projects? I would much rather go through projects, um, line by line, especially given what Superintendent said about the school committee. Uh, Counselor Najin?
I'm comfortable with, uh, Counselor Chittam's proposal.
Let's just do a thumbs up or thumbs down. We can move on. Who agrees, who disagrees? So, you get 1.4?
We can work with that, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. I have received a number of questions, uh, through the, through the budget work, and so thank you all very much for, for reaching out. It's helpful.
Thank you for being here, both of you.
You guys did a great job.
Thank you very much.
Director Gagne?
I'd just really like to be here.
I do.
How long have you worked for the city, Director?
Uh, just about, going on my thirty-second year, I believe.
Wow, so. Well, I mean, you look fabulous.
Oh, thanks.
Uh, are we on line thirty-three, Director?
We are on line thirty-three. Um, winter operations, construction materials, replace sandboxes. It says residential. I believe these are the sandboxes that we put out so that we can, um, buy doorways at different municipal buildings, so that staff or our public work staff and facility staff can sand and salt the walkways without having to bring a, a unit in or-
Like, there's a, there's one at this corner, right?
Yep. Yeah, so it's replacing those. That's what the slide item is for.
Are we feeling good about this, counselors?
Did you have a question, Counselor Najin? Yeah, there was a, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There, there was a series of items above that, that we did not thumbs up or thumbs down, so I'm just kinda checking.
You're talking about highways?
Basically, everything from line-
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four to thirty-three.
Yeah, um, how, how I thought we handled that was, uh, there was no, um, uh, misgivings among the council, and we sort of like lumped those together. Did, did counselors have concerns about any one of those items? Counselor Chittam?
Only that next year that these be put into the operations budget. Um, I, I don't have concerns about spending the money, it's just how it's, how it's accounted.
Yep, noted.
I guess just for clarification, I'd like to go through each item. In this case, uh, item, uh, thirty-three is part of winter ops, which is the only item in there. Kinda go through each item, and rather spend all this time to thumbs ups and thumbs downs every single item, just, uh, if, if we're okay taking it as a group, or certainly any counselor could pull out, you know, a specific line item, and we could, we can vote on that. Um, okay, uh, continue, Director.
Line thirty-four is for sidewalks. It's listed as other, other betterments, forty thousand dollars. This is for miscellaneous areas of sidewalk repairs. So, this is not part of the capital contracted out. This is for our internal public works to make repairs on sidewalks.
Like over the course of the year?
Over the course of year.
Okay.
Yep. Either after plow damage, if a curbing, or-
Like, like an accident, like we were just talking about guardrails?
Washes out, accident, all of those type of, yep.
Uh, ongoing maintenance.
All right, item thirty-five, uh, now we're going into-
Are we, sorry, one second. Are, are we feeling good about all of that, uh, the sidewalks, forty thousand, counselors? Okay. All right, on to lights.
All right. So, we generally refer to this as, um, it's, it's in the similar account, we, we, but it's with the electrical division. Uh, the next few items are streetlights. Uh, so that's street lighting, not signals. Um, but yet, we get into, that's the division, that they call it, even though as you get into the description, says repairs to signal. Okay, so, we don't have a signals division, we have a streetlights division. So, that's why you see that. So, streetlights and signals are two separate things, but we confuse it with our, our budgeting and the budget process. But, uh, so the first one is repairs to signals, eight thousand dollars. Uh, repairs to controller boxes at Pine and Webster and College and Russell.
Counselor, uh, Counselor Herrmann?
So, uh, Pine and Webster, is that just repairing or replacing the control box, or would that also add, um, pedestrian signals? Cause I know that's, that's one intersection where there's no pedestrian lights there.
So, this is not a capital project list. This is a replacement of materials.
Yeah.
Um, we are showing this on the expense line as well, so this is for expenditures. We are giving up, as part of an agreement with the main department of transportation, we are receiving funds to maintain our signals, uh, and, and that's to be used as needed. Um, I don't know if Dan would like to add, I get a feeling he's, so if Dan would like to add anything on this line item?
No, that's mostly, pretty much covers it. Um, this is more for upgrading materials, uh, controllers, and monitoring equipment of the intersection itself. Uh, doing a full recon on the intersection, that, that's a completely different project and eight thousand, that wouldn't touch it.
Thank you. And just, I guess quickly, so our signals are kind of like any other computer system. The controller is the piece that is coordinating everything. So, you have all the different heads and buttons and lights, and those all come back to this controller. So, it's kind of the brains, like in SCADA, or, uh, in brains of a system.
Counselor Chittam?
Um, are there pedestrian but, call buttons that do not, um, don't have any exposure? One of the problems that we have is that, uh, call buttons get stuck. And what happens at that point is the light cycles as though there's pedestrian at every single instance, uh, with the result that cars are sitting waiting, uh, contributing to global warming and, and road rage and driver frustration and everything else. So, my question very simply is, are there call buttons out there that do not have that stuck call button problem?
I got yelled at tonight in traffic, cause I'm in the big yellow truck, that the, the light was broken. So, I, I hear you. Um, I'll let Dan get into the details, but we have used, uh, MDOT spec four pad buttons when we put new installs in. Uh, those standards change. We're trying to get the most, uh, efficient and, you know, resilient button we can get, um, that, and then look at work on placement, so that it's not being hit, uh, either by sidewalk plows or other issues. Uh, it's, it's definitely a, a tough task, but I'll let Dan maybe along how many we have and how many were, we have, are problematic.
Well, we have fifty-four signalized intersections within the city. Um, the pad buttons are, have always been an issue. The older style pad buttons, which they are no longer making, were about twenty bucks a piece. You go up to them, you see people pounding them, well, they stick, cause they're mechanical in nature. They've come out with newer buttons, they're about a hundred and eighty to two hundred dollars a piece. But you gotta remember, at a four-way intersection, you got sixteen buttons, or eight buttons, rather. So, you're looking, it starts to get expensive. You add ADA requirements to that, now that twenty dollar button that became a two hundred dollar button is now a eight hundred dollar button, cause it's announcing where you're at, where you're crossing, and these are all needed things. I'm not saying we don't need them. But, the, the price of these buttons have become increasingly more expensive. So, if you have eight buttons at an intersection at eight hundred bucks a pop, that's sixty-four hundred dollars just in buttons. That's not mounting them, that's just the equipment itself. So, prices escalate quickly.
So, we are trying to work with DOT to get, you know, breaks on, in per, bulk purchase and purchase with Auburn and have unified type, uh, materials in signalized intersections. Um, but is, you know, being fairly new to this and, and trying to get some upgrades, we're also trying to coordinate with the actual, uh, geometry of the crosswalks. We've got striping. Uh, what we found is, if we start moving some of those, now we're dealing with right-of-way issues. So, I know people are very frustrated with signals, they're frustrated with crosswalks. Trying to do the best we can, because it, you will delay a project by at least two years if you have to do right-of-way. So, we're trying to keep the ones that are working, functioning. Dan just explained to you some of the challenges. Um, weather is an issue, freeze thaw, and they do put a, you are right, Counselor Chittam, they will put a, a signalized intersection, or even a quarter, in recall and mess up that timing. So, Dan's staff is, is working on software that's monitoring that, be able to respond to that and fix that, and not wait for a bunch of complaints. But they're actually trying to see it real time, so they can fix those things.
Uh, Counselor Najin?
I'm, I'm gonna flip it really quickly to the other perspective, and so, my question is on, on the timing, and I know this might sound like a rabbit hole, but on the timing for pedestrians, um, like for instance, when I'm crossing Main Street to Lisbon Street, um, I, I've got a fairly decent gate, and I don't make it halfway through one side of the intersection before I hit the median, before it starts to blink red. So, I'm questioning, like, the timing for the pedestrians, is that based on MDOT guidelines?
Depending on the quarter, um, right now, those were set back to, if we've upgraded the intersection, those were kind of set to what was default. We've been working with the ATRC, the Andersgård Regional Transportation Center over in Avcog, to actually coordinate our signalized intersections and, and get those readdressed. And, and really, it takes a traffic engineer, and they, they need to look at those, uh, as well as the population. So, right now, some of those are legacy. Um, they were initially done, probably to a, a DOT, federal highway standard, um, but those need to be addressed. And we, we started working on that, and we realized we had more infrastructure issues. So, communications issues between the intersections, uh, we had just pad buttons. Dan and his crew literally have fixed all of that to get that. So, now they can actually see it talking, they can actually start talking about getting the timing looked at. But we are not coordinated to look at timing yet. Did I get that accurate? Add what you-
Yeah, that's pretty accurate. Um, the MUTCD, which is a national standard put out for signalization, um, there are timing methods in there. They put in a three and a half second gate for people to walk. Uh, that determines what the time is. Just because the light begins blinking when you're in the intersection, in the crosswalk, rather, that's okay. Uh, the blinking light or crosswalk is to prevent you from stepping off the curb into the crosswalk. Um, and then when that blinking crosswalk stops, there's an additional exit time that's supposed to be added on to that as well.
Okay. Just as a follow-up, the, on East in Lisbon, which has the four lanes of traffic, the middle turn lane and the slip lane, um, where they just put in the new Starbucks, and we're talking about developing Montel School, the last time I was out there, there were no call buttons on, on, on the side of Dave's Way. And so, we know that's a high, uh, pedestrian collision area. I'm just wondering if there's gonna be upgrades to that area.
That corridor, East Ave corridor, especially East at Lisbon, has just been, uh, redone. There are all new pad buttons. Um, we are still looking to finalize that project. There's a lot of punch items that are still needs, need to be addressed. Um, that's where we're at now. And, once a contractor takes a corridor project, they are responsible for that entire corridor. So, it's us, it's tough for somebody like me or my crew to get in there. We wanna go make adjustments, but as soon as we do that, we void our contract with the contractor that says, while we're here, we're gonna maintain, they are obligated to maintain all of these intersections. And, uh, it's not, there's nothing more frustrating than seeing something that it's an easy fix and not being able to fix it, cause you avoid a warranty.
I appreciate you, the answers, and sorry for going down the rabbit hole, but-
It's okay.
Thank you.
Uh, next line is number thirty-six. It was the streetlights. It's, uh, small tools, thirty-two hundred dollars for a pipe threader. Uh, this is so they can, uh, thread conduit. We're talking about not small residential conduit, large conduit for our signalized intersections, the same ones that get hit and have accidents. So, they're trying, we have an electrical department, uh, in, in Dan's, you know, he has electricians with that ability, and this is asking for a pipe threader to be able to make those repairs.
Counselor Glant?
Is it a multipurpose, where you could use it for other pipes, or is it strictly just for conduit?
It will be able to be used with other pipes, as long as we have the dies.
Thank you.
Uh, this is a one-time purchase, not a, uh, regular purchase.
Counselor Chittam, did you have something?
I'm, I've, my thumb is standing up, waiting for moving on to the next item.
Number thirty-seven, uh, streetlights, construction materials, eighteen thousand dollars, uh, decorative luminaires. This is to replace approximately ten. So, in our downtown, we have single, they're on the top of the, the black painted poles, a nice black ornamental, it's kind of an acorn. So, standardized throughout the city, and, and then we have quads. So, if there's an accident and they're not insured, or we don't know who hit it, that's what this line item would pay to place. It's eighteen thousand dollars for approximately ten luminaires.
Counselor Chittam?
Is this an annual request?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, next line is, uh, line number thirty-eight, uh, streetlights again, construction materials, seven thousand dollars. This is for banner replacement. I have no other details. I'm gonna have to defer to Dan for what those banners might be.
Well, uh, last year, the banners had been put on hold. A lot of the banners, and if Angie would like to speak to this, she can, but, um, the banners we have, you'll see two sets. There's usually a spring flower, floral set, and then there's usually a fall, winter theme. There's usually a spring floral set, and then there's usually a fall/winter theme. Those banners, their lifespan's probably about three to five years. What happens is, like anything out, out in the sun, and it's a material, it just wears. The stitching gives away, they get weathered, you know, they come, they get faded. So a lot of the times, we'll put them up, and wind will actually, with the, with the sun, will actually stretch them so they become loose. So now we have to go out and tighten them up as best we can. We've tried putting them across the Longley Bridge. That's just been a difficult task to keep those there. It's always wind coming down off the falls. It's a difficult, and you know, when you're talking $500 to $600 a banner, it gets pricey trying to replace them all the time.
Counselor Herrmann?
Thank you. So these are the, the rectangular banners that sort of attach vertically to the poles, like, you know, welcome to Lewiston, that sort of thing?
Well, they're mostly floral, but yes, there's, the ones that were on the bridge were, had the city emblem on them, and they were, yes, welcome to Lewiston.
Counselor Chittam?
Thank you. I would like someone to reach out to Arts and Culture LA, ACLA. There has been a lot of discussion among that group of cultural organizations to having banners that reflect public theater, for example, LA Arts, other organizations that contribute to the community. And I know there's been discussion, I'd like that discussion to continue, rather than having simple flowers up there, let's send a message as well.
Director Amornas, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, we have been working with the arts community, researching the various groups that want to participate in, I think we have like 96 or so banners throughout the city, but primarily focusing on Main, Canal, Lisbon, that kind of thing. So yes, we're in communication with them. I'm finalizing an Excel document that lists all the locations and the sizes.
Further questions about banners?
All right, item number 39, I believe. This is still streetlight, construction materials, $25,000, infrastructure replacement in general.
I'll interject here. This is materials to cover crossarms, wooden poles, aluminum poles. These are typically poles that are in either rough shape, get hit and run, or they are general maintenance-type items that we may or may not use in the course of a year. I might use two poles in a year, I might use five poles in a year. So there's usually, there's usually an ask each, each year for this.
And to Dan's point, this, this may be higher or lower depending on the type of year we had, and these are, go back to the uninsured motorists, or there's a pole down, we don't know why, there's nobody responsible.
Counselor Najin?
We're talking about light poles?
This isn't streetlight.
Correct. It's either, it could be a wooden utility pole, which a city has some of, and/or a aluminum-type light pole, like you'd see on Main Street or Park Street.
Okay. I appreciate that. Just as a quick question, while we're on the subject, is there a, any type of backstop that goes on the LED lights in order to like prevent, you know how the LED lights cast light over a large area? But if it's like, for instance, like, I don't know, the utility pole's like six feet on somebody's property, is there a backstop that?
Yes. There's two different things you can do. The type of light fixture or luminary you can buy have a rating of a narrow forward focus or a wide rear focus. They're rated from R1 to R5, obviously R1, R2, R3, 4, and then R5 is basically the whole 360. We do have shades that we can put on lights, and we do get requests. When we get them, we go put them in as they come in.
So you don't need to send those to the director or to me, or to Dan, you can send those to Public Works, just call and ask for, for that, they'll get to the right people.
Counselor Chittam?
Annual request?
Yes.
Okay. So you know my thoughts on that?
Yep.
And I've heard a lot of talk about hit and runs and uninsured and so on. What, what's the sense of how many pole replacements or how many barricade replacements are the result of crashes that the driver has simply disappeared? Is that a big number?
I think it, go ahead, Dan.
It's more than you would think. We had one Sunday night, right on College Street, leaned out a pole. This was a consolidated pole, yet we had plant on it, meaning we had a streetlight on it. So we have to send people out there, you got a crew of two people, waiting for everybody to do their work, and then we can finally put our streetlight up. So another example is the corner of Cedar and Canal. I have a light pole there that I've replaced three times in the past year. It's a quad, decorative quad. That's an $8,500 expenditure, roughly, depending on how much gets damaged each time it gets hit. Two of them were insured motorists, one was an uninsured motorist. You know, to expect that to come out of a operating budget, I guess you could, you can do anything.
We do file reports with MMA, we have a deductible, and they try to go after that through legal means, but we've got to get the pole back up. And that's not, these are just fund item, fund balance items. There's other items that are itemized in the budget on all the different types of replacement that go along with the streetlights. There's also a, on Canal Street, there's a new intersection pole for traffic signals that I think, three or four times, we evaluated whether that pole was structurally sound before the contractor put a new pole and set it back further in the intersection, away from the end of travelway. And the brand-new pole got hit within a month. So it's, it's, some years, we might get lucky, but right now, we're trending on these type of number of poles being hit per year. I think it's 10 ornamental, and depending on the type of pole you heard from Dan on the, on the non-ornamental.
I think I heard a statistic the other day that we have 22 cameras up and running around the city that are under city auspices. I'm wondering, there's a calculus involved here. If we've got a lot of hit-and-run accidents and infrastructure damage because people are simply taking off, how much of the money that we lose because there is no ability to claim insurance on these, how does that weigh against the cost of putting additional cameras in to, to view traffic, high-traffic spots? So just a question for consideration when, when you have some spare time.
We can bump that up to PD and try to coordinate any replacements or anything like that.
Counselor Herrmann?
Thank you. I saw Director Starr furring his brow there. I think the, I think we have more than 22 cameras, but the ask was in the LCIP or could have been under, actually under fund balance, was for 22 replacements.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And we, I know PD does check surveillance to try to see who's at fault on these type of instances, so.
Any questions about, further questions about streetlights from council? Do we have any concerns about any of these items? I think we're, I think we're good with streetlights.
All right. Next is solid, solid waste, other betterments, $62,500. $500 for signage for new trash program.
What is, what is that for? Or can you explain? Or Meegan? Deputy Director Bates, my apologies.
Yes, this is part of the automated curbside trash collection. So there's going to be a workshop coming up here in the next few weeks, and changing the traffic amendment, changing parking will be a significant part of this rollover. And so this request here is for the purchase of signs that will be needed, channel posts.
Counselor Herrmann?
Thank you. So this won't be just, basically just signs educating people about the trash program? This will be like, you know, this, this block has no parking on Tuesday from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM or whatever?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
We did have other funding requests for communications, like mailers and flyers and, and things like that.
Counselor Najin?
Just to verify, would there be an expectation from the trash taller at all to provide any type of, obviously not physical signage, right, but printed information concerning the new systems? Those pieces, would that be possibly in the contract?
Yeah, as I've mentioned, we'll do a workshop on it, but we will be working as a team with the contractors. So they'll do a little bit of communication and public education, and we will likewise with our marketing director.
Counselor Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor. We did discuss this possibly being delayed elsewhere because we don't know what's going to happen with the contract. Do we, can we delay this in lieu of that? Or are we going to put signs up and hope it happens?
We, we would want to know essential core changes as part of an integrated plan with the contractor, so this can potentially be, be slid. Yep.
Didn't we already talk about delaying the, the garbage cans?
Yeah, I mean, once we get to workshop with you guys and talk more about some of the logistics, I think we'll have a better idea, but we can definitely put it on to be delayed if, along with the poll program gets delayed.
Okay. Yeah, I, I guess I'm not saying we don't need these, but.
Timing.
Yeah, it doesn't look like it gets happening in FY '25.
All right. Item 41, open spaces, repair to buildings, $15,000, the city portion of crack and ceiling tennis courts.
Are these, Director Bates, go ahead.
Yes. I asked for a similar portion last year in FY '23, and there's only a couple of companies that do crack a ceiling for tennis courts. They were booked solid. These tennis courts are in very poor condition, poor drainage, lot of cracks. One year of waiting, one winter, and the spider cracks get to be much more significant. The large cracks become canyons. So this additional funds will be needed because of the one-year postponement.
And, excuse me, where are these tennis courts?
These are at Franklin pasture, right at 156 East Avenue as you enter the, the high school.
Right, okay.
There are eight courts there.
Thank you. Counselor Herrmann?
Thank you. So this says city portion, is the rest of it the school's portion? Is that what the breakdown is?
Yes, this is the total, thank you, Counselor, yeah, this is the total portion of this. So there'll be, there'll be, a portion of this will go to the recreation department, and a portion will go to the high school.
Next one is downtown maintenance, $12,000, open spaces, holiday sphere and light replacement.
Director Bates, do you want to, Deputy Director Bates, do you want to talk about that?
Yes, we have expanded the holiday lighting quite a bit. We used to just do a couple of blocks of Lisbon Street, a small area on Main Street, and a little bit on Pine. And now we're doing these globes there in Dufresne Plaza. We've expanded the lights all the way down to Adams Avenue, including decorating the entrance to the downtown area, the gateway to the downtown area. So these are for replacements.
Yeah, and I must admit, it's looking better and better every year, so thank you. Counselor Najin?
In the past, when, when the program was first introduced, I believe that DLA used to work with the city in order to find sponsorships for some of the, for some of the spheres. And I'm just wondering if that type of program still exists?
Excuse me, it does not. It does take, you know, staff time to, to work with different organizations, but it worked out one season quite well, and we actually got some donations from contractors.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, open spaces, other betterment, $7,000, flagpole replacement at Veterans Park. Flagpoles are worn and, and broken, break down of fiberglass.
Counselor, Counselor Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor. Does this include flags?
I think flags may be another item. This is strictly a flagpole and the base.
Thank you.
I think flags are handled by the Veterans Council, if I'm not mistaken, but, yeah, I think so. Counselor Chittam?
This is simply wear and tear, aged, if the pole is aged out, this is not related to the flooding, or we, you can't piggyback that on the other repairs to the.
It didn't come that high in the park.
Well, that's good and bad, I guess.
Next item, $3,000, privacy screen replacement at KP Pool, Kennedy Park Pool. Nine total, ripped, faded and worn materials. All right. Next item, $21,880, trash receptacles and bench replacement. And I believe this is open spaces, so it's going to be in similar areas, old and damaged.
Counselor Glenn?
Thank you. Is this the new trash system, or is this just replacing what's there and a new is going to be something else?
These are in, in our parks, and I'm not sure if it's specific to Kennedy Park, but these are trash receptacles in our parks, so Kennedy Park, Sunnyside Park, as well as benches.
Counselor Chittam?
We heard a report on the underground trash cans. This is a separate program?
These are the existing ones that we have. We haven't necessarily cited those, those other ones. They would be more centric than ones that fill up more often, so.
Would any of the new ones that we're contemplating replace the ones that we're looking at replacing with the $21,000 here?
I will defer to Meegan, but I would expect possibly one or two.
This is only the replacement of four trash receptacles and four benches and the concrete slabs, so we might potentially remove a couple of these trash receptacles and replace it with the, I mean, we've asked for, I think, a dozen of the other ones in the new services sheet, which we can talk about later, but potentially, yes.
So we're, they currently exist and we're replacing them?
That's correct.
Okay. I know in the past, there's been trash cans removed, I think, from Lisbon Street, and I'm not sure that they got replaced. Do we, do we know anything about that?
Yes, and we have some new ones as well. It's just getting them assigned and having the staff to do it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And hopefully, we're in spring so we can get them out.
Yeah, no, I, I think, you know, I guess we can't complain about litter and having no trash cans in the, in the same sentence, so. Counselor Herrmann?
Thank you. As far as the benches, when we've replaced them, would it be possible to get the, like the same bench for continuity but without the bar across the middle? Because I know we, you know, we, we're looking to do something as far as an overnight shelter, but, you know, just, it just seems just really like a, like an extra kick in the teeth to weld a bar across the middle so people can't sleep on a bench.
Just to reiterate, the, one, there are sorely needed garbage cans, two, there are parks that have older bench systems that aren't the new bench systems, and three, coming back to hit and runs, we lost a trash can and a bench on Lisbon Street back in 2001. I think we also lost a tree in, in a whole process, so, yeah, people do hit them too. But yeah, supportive.
Counselor Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm going to disagree with Counselor Herrmann. The bars, I think, are highly needed, because if not, then we're going to have homeless laying them on all day long, and then the regular public can't use them. I know we'd like to try to service one community that way, but you find out across the street if you don't have. have the bars there, they lay them all day long, and then people can't come sit. So I think that's the purpose for the bar. I understand your concern, I have the same concern, but I think the bar will allow the general public more access to them than just those that hang out there to sleep.
Next item is $15,000, open spaces, Randall Road dugout replacement, two.
Who's talking about that?
So we have three fields at Randall Road Softball Complex, and we just purchased two in 2023, and this will replace another, two dugouts on another field. These dugouts were there when I started Iraq in 1990, in 1995, so they are well past their replacement time.
All right, next item. I think we talked about this earlier, is last, one of the last meetings, $31,350 for a GPS field lining robot.
Can you remind us what that does again?
So this robot can be programmed for the athletic field and actually stripe the field, so depending on the color paint and the pattern, so if you're doing soccer, or if you're doing small game soccer, or setting up for football, it can paint those lines, allow staff to be doing other things, field maintenance, while that's ongoing. I mean, we wouldn't leave it, let it go at 2:00 in the morning. We'd be there while we're, depending on the field, getting it ready for that game.
Counselor Nagy?
How many fields overall would this, well, two things. One, would it do baseball and softball as well, and then how many fields overall are prepped for these types of lines?
I don't have that off the top of my head, I'm, I'm sorry, but I can get that information for you, but this will line any athletic field, including, actually, in addition to when we have various events, say at Samar Payne, and they have a certain plan that they provide to the city, it would do anything.
For like a kickball tournament or something?
Kickball tournament, any type of tent layout, it will do whatever you program it to do.
Counselor Chittam?
Anticipated life of this GPS robot and cost avoidance. How much staff time are we going to save by having this? Is it economically viable?
It is, otherwise we wouldn't have asked for it, and we do have that information. I don't, again, I don't have it here this evening, but I'm happy to provide that to you.
We'll forward it to the council.
Are there any, other municipalities in Maine that have this thing?
I can find that out, I'm not sure.
I'm just curious. Counselor Glant, did you have something?
Thank you. Is it encompassing to move? I've seen these units where they weigh a couple hundred pounds. In order to get it from one field to the other, it takes two bodies to get it on a truck, two bodies to get it down. Do you know if it is, because then you get man-hours and time now involved with moving it and strapping it, as well as training?
Yes, most of our fields in one, excuse me, are one location is Franklin pasture, but we have trailers, we are constantly moving equipment around. This is, this, no problem for our crews. It's part of our regular assignments.
How, how big is this robot? Something like a lawnmower size, or?
Yes, yes, like the size of a lawnmower, a push lawnmower, a little bit bigger than a push lawnmower.
Right, it would just drive up on the, on the ramp or something?
Yes.
Further questions? All right, next item.
Next is $8,500, holiday ground display for Dufresne Plaza. I believe that's for winter lighting.
It is. It's, whatever's chosen would be probably up for two, two and a half months, and we'd like to choose something that might be a really good photo op for families and citizens that are walking through Dufresne or go to our holiday event.
So this wouldn't be just for the holiday event, this, this thing would be up for, like, the duration of winter?
We could, yes. I'm thinking probably November, December, part of January.
Counselor Nagy?
And I, I take it it's reusable, right?
Oh, yes, yes, every year.
Could we, maybe this is, you know, could we, like, trade it in or get a different one each year? I mean, how, how many, how many times can you get a picture with a snowman each year?
This would be just a purchase. It wouldn't be anything that we could swap out.
I see, okay.
We can move it to a different location. We had thought of Dufresne Plaza. Not everybody goes downtown. We might choose a different location based on where we have electrical. Right now, we have some small snowmen at Raymond Park. We may move there. We could move it to anywhere, again, that we have electrical.
Thank you.
Director Roy just pointed out with the, the robot, it was less than a three-year payback on that striping robot. All right, next is a $20,000 tree purchases for open spaces.
Director, Deputy Director Bates, did you want to comment on that?
Yes, trees are run anywhere from $300 to $500. These purchases are to replace some of our damaged trees. In 1998, we had our ice storm. There was a considerable amount of work done on the city's tree canopy, and we were in good shape. It's been 26 years. So the windstorms that we've had this year, and it seems like we've had more wind storms here in the last couple of years, and it's done a number on our trees.
Counselor Chittam?
We can't have enough trees in Lewiston. However, have we leveraged all of the sources of funding for this? The Governor's Office of GOPIF, I think it's called, has offered money for trees. The Arbor Day Foundation, have we looked everywhere for, under every rock for money to put these necessary trees up?
Our city operus is very aggressive in getting grants. He tends to always get the tree canopy grant, so I'm going to say yes. And we also have our own nursery that we work on as well, so we're growing our own trees.
Thank you. Next item is $3,000, bridge material for snowmobile trail system.
This is for a bridge on Outer College Street. A snowmobile club had contacted us, I want to say about six or seven months ago, requesting some assistance for a bridge over the ditch to get access to their snowmobile trails. They had mentioned also that this could be just used, that these trails could also be used for pedestrian, you know, hiking, that sort of thing.
Counselor Chittam?
These, these are private trails?
I believe that they're, they're not one of our city maintained trails, I'll say that.
Private trails on private land. This is at the Yezment.
Thank you.
Counselor Glant?
Thank you, Mayor. Familiar with a lot of snowmobile clubs, most of them build their own. I don't understand why they're coming to us, because they get state funds. Anybody who registers a snowmobiles, that money goes to the clubs, for the most part, to do trail upkeep, buy their fancy machines to run down the trails. Any particular reason why they're asking, or?
All I know is this is for materials only, and they do plan doing their own work on the trails.
Thank you.
Do you want to, on that one?
Well, let's just continue through this.
Next item is $50,000, Kennedy Park Master Plan Update. I see it in here, however, in the CIP, I think it was scheduled a different year, but...
Which one?
Line item 51.
51, yeah. So you're saying it shouldn't be in here, or?
I think we had asked for it initially in FY26.
Oh, okay.
If you look at the detail sheet.
And what was the reasoning for FY26, or that's?
Timing and workload.
Staff availability, yeah, okay.
I think with, talking with Deputy Director Bates, you know, the, the plan hadn't been updated in a while, but what we have going on, we, we put it in, I believe FY26 was the quest, but...
27.
27. So it's, it's, it's actually in FY27, so I'm not sure why this got in there, but that can go to FY27.
Okay, there's that.
Next line item is, you know, still with open spaces, $70,000, Sunnyside Park renovations, CDBG funded.
Did you want to comment before questions, Deputy Director Bates?
Yeah, there was a application submitted, and this project was awarded CDBG funds for plans only for the parks renovations. So it would be to hire a consultant to assist public works staff as well as the residents. We want, this is definitely going to have a lot of neighborhood and residential, just citywide input.
Counselor Glant?
What is the deferred? It's got 70 and 70 side by side. Help me out.
So that was originally put in the LCIP, and then CDBG came along and said that that could be funded through their funds. So that's why it was, it was moved over to deferred to be covered by CDBG.
It's not really deferred, it's just going to, yeah.
Counselors, do we have any, any questions or any concerns about open spaces? Counselor Roy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a hard time funding GPS robot when we're cutting the school budgets and stuff like that. That's just my concern with that.
Counselor Harriman? Thank you. Yeah, I also, on the snowmobile trail bridge, where it's a private, you know, private trail, and it just seems like something that we don't need to be funding. That was, I had that one, and then also the holiday ground display. I guess I don't know, I'm not entirely sure what exactly that is. I know it was explained a little bit, but just not completely sold on that yet.
Director Morez, do you mind coming up to explain the holiday ground display?
She apparently does.
Like, we've had, we've had several at the holiday light spray. Sorry, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
I don't know how much the directing, director of marketing was involved, but again, we are expanding our lighting. We are having a pretty significant holiday event now, and this would just expand on our holiday lighting that we have in the downtown area. I had mentioned it can be moved, this item can be moved throughout the city, but we just thought that it would start in Dufresne Plaza if it was funded.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the vision was if you go down to outdoor retail center south of us, you have some nice lighted arbors, there's a snow globe, there's something that wintery and, and people are taking pictures of, so I think it's meant to be something fun for all non-denominational, and, and something that could be up, and Lewiston would get traction on getting Instagram, Snapchat, and all the different, so...
When families are out with their kids.
Right. So we, you know, we haven't specified that. I think there was an allowance for that, whether it's something stick-built, or cardboard, or inflatable. I, we're not specific on those details, but I think it's a general allotment there to get something of that nature.
Yeah, there's, there are catalogs, catalogs, sorry, catalogs that have these types of items, and they are very well-built. They're commercially built.
Thank you. Director Glant, or Counselor Glant?
Thank you, Mayor. I too have a problem with the snowmobile wood. I would have rather see them come as a nonprofit, when all our nonprofits were here asking for money in a different funding area, twice being a line item. And I do also have a GPS field lining problem, although I think it's great to have that. I just think that we're taking these things away all the way around, and maybe that's something that can be delayed a year, and we'll see what happens. So it's my opinion.
You want to do a thumbs up?
So, right, one second, Director Roy. So right now, I have flagged the GPS robot, what is it, the holiday?
Ground display.
Yeah, ground display for 8,500, and then the bridge material. Are there any other items that counselors have concerns about? Counselor Chittam?
Yes, I'm not altogether comfortable or, or happy with the holiday spheres and lighting replacement, given the, the tightness of our budget. I would opt not to vote for that. And I think Kennedy Park Master Plan Update, I need to know more about that before I could support.
That was in there erroneously.
All right, yep, I did. I wrote out instead of no, and I couldn't read my own writing, so, that's it, for, for open spaces.
Counselor Harriman, did you have something?
I just wanted to check on line 40, the signage for the trash program. Did we come to an agreement that we were going to defer that, or?
Yeah, we, we did.
If, if something progresses, it's kind of like the trash cans, if everything progresses and you want to go faster, we can revisit funding, but it can be delayed.
So my thoughts on these items, yeah, I, I'm fine with the bridge material being handled by the snowmobile club. I think the holiday ground display for 8,500 and the holiday sphere, you know, we've done a lot of work with holiday lighting in the city. We get numerous compliments. Director Bates, do you mind coming back up? Can you outline for the council all of the, I guess if you were, you were, if you know or remember all of the feedback we got for the holiday light displays, when we, up to that a few years ago?
I'm going to be honest, we don't track that, so that probably might have come in through administration, but not the Public Works Department. I will, I will say, though, that if we don't do these replacements, these items, because of the elements, they don't last forever. So what it looked like last year, it will not look like that this year, guaranteed.
Yes, I have concerns with delaying those items. And the GPS field robot, I mean, it sounds like, sounds like a luxury, right, but in fact, it, it will save staff time.
It will, it will save staff time, and we don't even have the staff that we need right now, so if we could have it, it would be a tremendous help.
Yeah, my point.
We're doing a lot of our field maintenance stuff on overtime to be able to get some of that stuff done.
Right, and hence the, the payoff in three years. Okay, my point exactly. Counselor Nagy?
I just have a question on, so speaking about Franklin Pastures particularly, do we bill when people rent the fields for, for that staff time, especially when it's overtime?
We have a rental agreement, so they do get charged. People that use the facility do get charged.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I guess we can go through these items, and just put one more plug in for holiday lights. I was a part of the, this was long before I was involved in city politics. I was part of the committee with Jules Patri and a few other members. I think Reggie was on there from the city. And, you know, for a city that suffers from an image problem, it created a lot of goodwill among the residents, and, you know, it really makes our city look great. I would, I, I feel like we'd be canceling Christmas if we decided not to fund the lights. But I guess we will go through the list here. So how do we feel about the holiday sphere and light replacement, counselors?
What number are we on?
This would be 42.
42.
I think we're moving forward on that. Okay, and then the GPS field robot. And the holiday ground display. And the bridge material for snowmobile trail system. Director Bates? Perhaps, perhaps the snowmobile club could, we could maybe connect them with Lowe's or Home Depot for materials and see if they'd be willing to donate.
I can have that conversation with them.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to put our stores on the other side of the river. Okay, on the hook.
So, item number? So, item number fifty-three, uh, it's the hydro canal maintenance, a hundred and ten thousand.
And what does, uh, can you offer a little more explanation?
City portion of canal upkeep agreement with Brookfield is what we have, but, uh, realistically, uh, we've looked at the CIP has the five hundred thousand that we item, itemized specific projects out of. I'll let Dan talk to what he's dealing with, uh, some of those maintenance costs.
That hundred and ten thousand dollars is typically for canal maintenance, uh, regarding removing shrubs, uh, incidental maintenance where we have, uh, gate upkeep. There is some carpentry work that we do, we remove things. It varies year over year. Typically, we try to target one area of the canal. Last year, they did Main Street at Canal all the way down to, is it Ash Street? Where we did, then we did another portion that was on Canal Street starting at Cedar all the way to the end of the canal. This also, uh, we have also other incidental items that go with the canal, but that's in our operating budget.
And, uh, if I heard you correct, uh, Director Gagne, this is an agreement that we have with Brookfield?
That's, that's the, uh, we need to revise that, we don't have an agreement with Brookfield. We purchased the canal, this is our canal, so.
Oh, I see, right, yeah, okay.
Yep.
Counselor Najin?
So, just to go over this, we, we had removed the, um, five hundred thousand, brought it down to two hundred thousand for the canal ownership projects and a lot of that was focused on, uh, the hydro, uh, station, if I'm correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so this is just basic maintenance?
That is correct. We also have other items that we are working on, uh, with the purchase of Brookfield. Obviously, we've done some work, uh, isolating pen stocks, that's what feeds the canals, tail races, uh, these are all safety issues that need to be addressed. So far, we've done some of the upper A, of the upper Andes Gorgon, um, hydro facility. There are five other hydro facilities, um, that we are, have on our radar, but we have yet to address. Uh, it's more of an engineering plan that is going to be approached as we move forward. Some of the stuff that we had, uh, I don't know all the particulars, so I don't want to speak to it, but it has to do with, uh, the Continental, uh, Mill Five, these are all hydro facilities, uh, the Hill Mill that the city has part ownership of or did have part ownership of.
Thank you.
Further questions about this, uh, hydro, uh, canal maintenance? Uh, how's the council feeling about this? Uh, Counselor Chidham, did you have something?
Yes, um, I'm, I'm seeing several different sources of funding for canal work, uh, and I'd like to have a, a better picture of how much is in the capital improvements plan, how much is coming from the fund balance, how much is in the operating budget and what all that does. I, I'm sure that there's no overlap there, but it's confusing to me.
This is initially, this, this hundred and ten thousand dollar ask is initially in the operating budget. And to go over some of the other items that are included in there, Dan talked about, so we have two, we have the upper canal, the lower canal, cross canals, and then those hydro facilities that Dan talked about, as well as gates to maintain levels in the canals. You also have flashboards and you have debris that comes down into the canal that, you know, we, we had to repair some of those flashboards and different control devices stop those from getting lodged into the, into the pen stocks and some of the, the gates. So those are the types of repairs that aren't covered in some of these line items. Some of the operational line items are, um, some different cross charging from labor to be able to do the, the canal work, um, fire alarm and low temperature alarms, a telephone line for monitoring, uh, the biggest one is heat. We have electronics in there that, and cold water through the winter, which is just dropping the temperature of that and we don't need things to freeze and break and then we have a flood. CMP power, um, charging a vehicle and then some FERC charges, uh, miscellaneous supplies. So the biggest item really is what might come up in this canal system that's not part of, uh, River Island Master Plan project, which is laid out more in the Capitol LCIP. So this is asked for in the operating budget and then has been put on the list for fund balance.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Counselor Najin?
Just as a side note, it, it doesn't have to be done during this meeting, but if we could get an update on the FERC relicensing, uh, and also where we're sitting with the requests that we have for Brookfield.
Uh, Dan, we can, we can get some information, bring it back to you. Dan is in correspondence with the FERC licensed, uh, person and we can try to get that as a summary. I, I forgot to add, I mean, some of these are buildings, so you have windows, blocks, fence around the canal that, so some of these aren't large capital items, these are operational, people breaking into the building and, and, you know, homeless people trying to get in. It's not a safe place to exist, so those are things that are paid for under this as well.
I recommend to the council that we move this forward. Councilors?
Great, thank you. Uh, next is, uh, four, three, eight, one, municipal garage prepares to equipment, uh, forty thousand dollars replace unit five, six, undercarriage.
Do you mind just coming up to the chair here? Since we're gonna maybe have you for a few items. Thank you, Phil.
My name's Philip Branza, I'm the Fleet Operations Superintendent here at the city.
Can I just, uh, move in the mic? Sorry, we're just, for, just audience at home.
I'm Philip Branza, I'm the Fleet Operations Superintendent here at the city.
What's the five-six?
Hmm? Oh, the five-sixes, okay. The five-sixes are a large bulldozer. It's used during the summertime in the quarry to push debris and whatnot. In the wintertime, it's what primarily pushes the snow dump of the operations center. The unit's twelve years old and this item was separated from the regular, it's listed in the regular repair budget, but due to the size of the dollar figure, it's probably like one-sixth of the entire budget. So it was moved outside that budget, they separated it out just so it, you could see why it, you know, it would affect the regular budget if we didn't add this extra forty thousand dollars. So this way they are, it's clear why that we're asking for an extra increase over what we would normally get. So the undercarriage, you know, the track system, the chains, sprockets, rollers, all that stuff is just worn out. I mean, it's, it's got like twelve thousand hours on it.
Counselor Najin?
And the forty thousand dollars will get us how much longer on the equipment?
Oh, I think we'd probably get another eight, ten years out of it.
Thanks.
Counselor Harriman?
And, um, to compare, how much would a new unit cost?
I've talked to the salesman, it's close to four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Chidham, did you have something?
What is this dozer?
It's a John Deere seven fifty K.
Okay, thank you.
Next item?
Uh, next item is thirty-four thousand dollars municipal garage, uh, five hundred dollars, thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars line boring and welding equipment.
We have a substantial investment in heavy equipment at the city and the biggest problem with heavy equipment is the joints wear out over time. And how they fix them is they weld them and then line bore them, which is, it's kind of a specialized thing, there's only a few companies that do it. Most bigger construction companies, gyms rented, places like that, all own this equipment because trying to wait for the few people that do do it outside of, you know, major companies, the machine can sit there for a month or so waiting for someone to show up to actually do the work. So to repair these joints, we've looked back at our history of the, when we've subbed out this type of work and it's anywhere from, say, eighteen hundred to over three thousand dollars, depending on how many sections that they have to line bore and go through. So we figure we can recoup the cost in this in about six to seven years.
And we have the expertise on staff to use this equipment?
Yeah, we have some people that have used it and part of this, they would come up and train us and we'd physically do, you know, several of the joints and whatnot to train our welder and senior mechanics on how to do it, so.
Counselor Chidham?
Uh, if the payback is six to seven years, what's the life expectancy of the equipment?
I've talked to a couple of companies that have had this type of equipment, it's twenty-some-odd years old in some cases.
Thank you.
All right, next item, uh, thirty-five hundred dollars replace jib boom electric winch.
Inside the municipal garage, we have a, a jib boom, you know, it's a standard boom with a boom that swings around inside the shop and the heavier, we want to say heavier smaller items, like the larger plate compacters and things like that, five, six, seven, eight, hundred thousand pounds. That's how the mechanics get them onto the workbench is to disassemble them. Well, the motor burnt up in it last year, so we haven't had the ability and it's not an area where the fork truck really fits, so it's been kind of, you know, it's a safety-related i- issue for us to be able to work in that area of the shop, so.
You're saying it's not operational at this very second?
No, it's not operational, the electrician's disconnected it.
All right, uh, next item, replace ladders, platforms and steps.
Um, inside the municipal garage, we have everything from step ladders to portable, what they call ballymore steps, you've probably seen them, the grayish colored steps with the rubber wheels on them. A lot of them are probably twenty, thirty years, it's twenty or thirty years old, some of them are damaged, some of them aren't tall enough for the modern vehicles. I don't know if any of you have bought a new Chevrolet pickup truck, but, I mean, you it's a foot taller than they were so many years ago, so some of them aren't tall enough and there's other specialized ones that we now need because of just areas you have to get that we can't just easily get to, so. Again, it's a product, productivity and safety concern.
Counselor Chidham?
Um, so this is not an annual request?
No, this is a, you know.
What happens to the old equipment?
It'll get destroyed. We've already destroyed some of it, some of it was just, you know, we've just cut it out and throw it away in the scrap metal.
Do we have surplus equipment auctions in Lewiston?
We do, but not when it's compromised safety equipment, so ladders that are no longer, we do not repair those things. It's, it's, you get, you destroy them so no one can grab it and bring it home, use it and fall off the ladder and get injured.
Probably a wise move.
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is the, uh, twenty-seven fifty, uh, two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars for an ice machine. Uh, this is a safety issue, so inside the, come down to the public works garage, there is no cooling. We try to heat it in the winter, uh, but there's no cooling in the summer. So they have fans that are drawing, uh, this is for, uh, all of public works, actually, Phil's been nice enough to say, hey, come into my break room and grab ice for others that are on, we do not have an ice machine at public works. So this is for, primarily for the municipal garage, uh, but we've been, you know, longer, hotter days, uh, we talk about global warming and those type of things, so in the wintertime we're worrying about the crews out in the field and, and making sure they can get warm and, and not have frostbite. On the summertime, we're talking about heat stroke and heat stress, so, uh, this unit would help not just the municipal garage, but also all crews can grab ice, fill up coolers and, and things like that. We also do training, so just, um, extreme changes in heat can make something happen too, so we do training to make sure that people are staying cool and hydrated and not just going from hot, one hot extreme to an ice cold and then having somebody pass out, so we, we are safety conscious too.
Thank you. Any, uh, any questions about any of these items from the municipal garage? Do you have any concerns about any of these items? I think we're, I think we're good? Thank you.
Next item fifty, uh, line fifty-nine, public works buildings, uh, repair the building, sixteen thousand, overhead door repairs. Louis?
He's coming up.
Coming up.
So this is at public works, I can probably address this one. Uh, we have out there for, asking for, um, vehicle wash bay. We have one door that is consistently and regularly being hit and that's that large overhead door into the, uh, wash bay area we're trying to new, use now at public works. It's not a good fit, it's tight and people are hitting that one, uh, but I'll let Louis expound on some of the other garage, all the garage doors at public works.
Obviously, they're used daily. It, it's a huge wear and tear. The sixteen thousand dollars is probably a low estimate of what it'll take to cover repairs alone. We're over budget this year, I can safely say that. The doors are too narrow for the equipment we're using now, they were designed in forty-two, I think that was the date of the building, so everything's bigger, wider. The doors get hit pretty consistently, month by month. That and there's age. Every time we call somebody in to look at a door, an overhead door, it's going to replace the doors with nylon wheels just to meet current specs and code. So that's where the money goes.
Counselor Chidham?
Just a question, how many, how many overhead doors are there at BW?
It's going to be an estimated guess, I think there's thirty-six.
Thirty-six?
Both locations.
Okay, and this covers, uh, repairs to all thirty-six doors?
Yeah.
Wow. I, I, I don't want to say this out loud, but wow.
Uh, next line item in public works buildings, repairs to building, fifteen thousand dollars door replacement and hardware, so those are the non-garage doors.
So we have one door in particular that needs to be replaced, the door got probably bumped by a car, we never found exactly how that happened, but the whole door frame is cracked, we've screwed it in place, but it's probably on like side of a security risk, it should be done. It's, it's such an old door that we'll end up replacing hardware also, that's probably close to eight thousand dollars right now.
This is a man, a man door?
Yes, a man door. Yeah, not eight thousand for the door, we're probably close to two grand for that door, easily. But we've got a, a lot of hardware issues, um, sorry, I've got one, two, one door frame, so this one door, there's, there's two doors, both facing the, uh, apologize, Adams Avenue that need to be replaced and we go through and do hardware upgrades.
All right, next item is thirty-eight thousand dollars install snow guards on equipment bay roof.
So this is at the operations center where the log trucks go in and out all the time. Right now it's just a straight shot, standing seam metal roof and so safety issues, equipment issues, cleanup issues, access to the doors.
Uh, next item, seventy-five hundred dollars replace intercom and update temp office.
So I've got a note here, uh, I may have made an error in putting, adding the numbers up here, but the intercom does not need to be replaced, so we can reduce that number by thirty-five hundred dollars. The remainder would be used to upgrade an office that we set up temporarily for one of the staff that's now become permanent, so we'd like to make improvements on that area. It's in the training room at the engineering building.
That's the temporary nature, it was, it was temporary and now it, we want to convert it to permanent. Thank you.
Uh, so, sixty-three, uh, line sixty-three, we have training room chairs, one thousand nine hundred thirty dollars, um, that's repairing existing chairs that have, that broke down over the years and adding folding chairs so that we can accommodate larger public meetings.
Counselor Glenn?
Are you all part of that fund, will we get to go down to that place and look at furniture? Can we, have we been down there to see if we can get furniture there? Is that money going to be used through that or brand new?
So this, this is our public works training room, it's audio accessible, uh, we initially set it up as a backup, uh, emergency ops center, so we're tied in, we've got a large screen, our finance committee meets there Monday nights for their meetings. The initial rollout of all the tables and chairs, it was consistent, it looked nice and now we're getting the hodgepodge of chairs and the chair that doesn't stay up and the chair that leans all the way back and, so this is to replace those. chair that leans all the way back, and so this is to replace those to make it a nice professional space where we can have outside agencies. This isn't just a back office staff room, but, so it's to update that.
And to answer the other part of your question, we are members of the share center, so we can watch. It's just a hit or miss, so it depends on how long do you want to wait?
Fire separation. Yep. The next item, building and structures, forty thousand, fire separation. Just with all the changes this year, I'm going to take that one. We missed, we already have funding for that design. We should have asked for construction this year of the fire separation wall at public works. It is a safety issue where the municipal garage and going above the office space, there's open space up in there that the, that firewall is not adequate, so that's what this is for, but we don't need the forty thousand, and we'll come back to you for FY twenty-six for the construction materials.
Any questions about any of these items? Do you have any concerns about any of these items? I think we're good?
Thank you, Louis.
And you did library?
Yeah, you want to, I was going to do one at nine. Will you want to do one now? We're going to, we're going to take a brief, five-minute recess. Hello, we're, we're back. Director Roy?
So, next we'll go to line seventy-three, which is the economic development. So, these are the items. If you remember, the other night, I gave you a spreadsheet of an account number that shows the projects. These are putting those funds into that reserve to cover for the BM steam plant reserve, the economic development reserve of two hundred and fifty thousand, the public art fund of fifty-two thousand, the destination amenities for fifty thousand. All of these are requested to be put in that reserve account to be added. Do you have any questions on those?
Counselor Glatt?
Do you need them?
It's all things that would be for the betterment of the city and are absolutely needed. You know, again, I know we've got a lot of competing priorities here, so.
So, being the bad guy, what can be pushed off to next year or partial as we're trying to, you know, scrape up nickels and dimes and quarters?
I think the Bates Mill Steam Plant Reserve, that's the seventy-five thousand, I think that's, is that a contractual obligation? That is one that I was always aware of that was out there, but I was not involved.
That's transferred every year to the reserve to cover for that, so that one would, I would suggest, needs to stay. I know economic development reserve has, has been very important to some of you city councilors, so I don't know if that's an item. There are projects that have started. Two hundred and five thousand of that money has been reserved, bringing the total down to two hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven seventy-six that's in there currently. This two hundred and fifty thousand would add to that for them to be able to use for economic development.
And out of that original amount that we'd had, we have, not that they've been committed yet, but we do have interest in people asking for those funds, so that is a very good pot of money. It's not necessarily a, it doesn't need to be put out as a grant. It could be put out as a loan, so it's going to be coming back, but it's really moving away from the community development block grant dollars, which have lots of strengths and requirements, and it's very difficult. It's not impossible to use those dollars, but it's challenging, and so that's, that's the whole reason we've been trying to capitalize our own reserve funds.
I think, yeah, for mostly, I mean, what you're talking about is the development reserve. This is really a tool that can be used by economic development to help propel economic development in the city. Like, yeah, I consider, I would put for it that we fund all these items. Counselor Herman, did you have something?
Just wanted to say that I think this is sorely needed for, just for general economic development work.
Thank you.
Counselor Najin?
Just to speak to these, to the two hundred and fifty thousand specifically, one, the planning board is possibly looking at establishing some type of TIF district. I would like to point out that any time that we're looking at TIFs, it might not be a bad idea to peel one or two percent off to go back into economic development as a consideration for the future. Two, can we put a, any type of restrictions concerning, so if we're setting up an economic development fund, for instance, if I wanted to say we do not want to fund programming that produces housing that is at sixty percent of the, of the median income of the, of the community, for instance, talking about housing specifically, so what I'm saying is economic development, that would be, let's say, a hundred to a hundred and twenty percent of the median income for housing or for businesses that maybe not, not necessarily even downtown, somewhere around the corridors, you know, what I'm trying to say is this fund, I don't want to necessarily be limited to specific things we've done in the past.
And that's really the reason for creating it, is we have always been bound by the rules of community development block grant funding, which is low to moderate income. People have to benefit, have to provide services to them. If you use it for housing, you have to cap the incomes that people who live there for a period of three years after you give it. The whole reason we're creating this program is to step away from the very issues you just raised. And, and from a TIF's perspective, we will have several TIFs coming, and we're always saying that's one of the allowed purposes when we create a TIF is to capitalize economic development loan and grant programs, so it's, it's what we're doing going forward.
Appreciate it.
Counselor Chittam?
On the... There you are. On the public art fund, we started two years ago with a twenty thousand dollar allocation. We spent seven of that, and now all of a sudden, we're looking for fifty-two thousand. Wow, is there a specific project in mind?
There are multiple murals, and I'm not on that particular art committee. Counsel Longchamp, are you a relatively recent member of that committee, so I don't mean to put you on the spot, and I know there is talk of painting, like, you know, electrical boxes that are in the downtown, so it's just having a black or gray, putting murals on those the way we did with, with the fire hydrants in the past. I think there's one large-scale mural that's, at least one that's in the pipeline, and is there more you can elaborate on?
That's pretty much what I know of thus far.
Okay.
There are many more fire hydrants, also electrical boxes and murals going up, two that I know of.
So, and so to say, is all fifty thousand, fifty-two thousand needed? That's a possible spot for a reduction. The destination amenities as well, it's, all of this is to make the downtown, the city a more vibrant place to be, make it a, make it a destination. Its dollars, I think, in time really should be funded. Around the same, well, we can't do that. The mayor's been speaking of with the lighting and whatnot, so. Public art budget, so let's see, twenty boxes. There were sidewalk murals. There were twenty boxes being created for the electrical boxes, and there was one large-scale mural of twenty-five thousand, and then some money for a block grant party and window wrap project, so it, there's, this money certainly hasn't been awarded, but that was sort of what was, was driving it.
And I wanted also to ask about destination amenities. That's a pretty broad term. What does that encompass?
A lot of it's lighting, which has been talked about over the years, that we should do a better job of lighting the canals themselves, the bridges, to really highlight them, showcase them. There's been talk of lighting the falls. I think that's got technical issues associated with it, but just better public spaces. Some communities you'll go to, and there might be musical instruments that are very durable, but that they bring people downtown and people gather around them and play with them. I know when I've traveled to Austin, had these big fiberglass, various musical instruments, so it's those type of amenities that will really bring you.
Okay, Brunswick has Andreas von Huna gongs that are in the town mall that are set on granite stones, and there are big rubber hammers, and so that's the sort of thing that we're talking about.
A big, and that's, that's just what, some of the concepts. I can't, it's not defined, but it was those type of concepts. Let's, let's do something that brings more energy and vibrancy to the downtown.
Okay. Thank you. I would be in favor of funding these, but perhaps not to the level that is proposed in the, from the fund balance.
Counselor Najin?
Just when we talk about the destination amenities, and I haven't seen it in any of the, any of the pieces here, can we please talk about wayfinding signage? And specifically, like, if I'm on Main Street, for instance, and I want to find the Oak Street parking garage, there's no indication anywhere on Main Street that there's a parking garage on Canal Street or Main Street. When I'm standing at DeFran Plaza, I have no idea where the Franco Center is. These are all pieces that like, I understand the, you know, the interest in putting in a gong, for instance, or, or, you know, a musical piece, but like, our downtown is actually walkable if people realize how close things are to each other, and if you're coming here from, from a place that, you know, it's, we all know where the Sontreville Garage is, right? Somebody who's never been here before does not, and so I, I think it's important that, that we, when we talk about destination amenities, maybe we talk about figuring out some way to map out downtown, and not just downtown, but other places as well. The signage that we have for wayfinding right now was put in, I think, when Jonathan LaVonty was the mayor of Auburn, like, twelve years ago or something?
I'm sure it was when he was mayor of Auburn, or if it was when he was with the land trust.
Right, either way, it, it, they're, it's not really relevant anymore, so.
It could certainly be improved upon. I know we did have some early initiatives, but it's been quite a few years, and a lot of them ultimately did not get implemented. The wayfinding that was done at that point was more, it was more for automobile, but it was a little bit shy even on the automobile because the letters were too small to read it at speed, but they were sort of large, and there weren't enough of them for the pedestrians, so it's certainly something that's not been incorporated in, in planning, but it's something I think that could be and should be. So, good point.
I think, yeah, you know, we've, we've had quite a few murals go up over the past few years, some public, some private, and, you know, these are, you know, if we're talking about fifty-two for public arts and fifty for destination amenities, you know, I understand that every dollar counts, but these are really, really such low amounts. I would certainly be in favor of funding these both at these levels. You know, take for instance, the zebra. When the zebra happened... When the zebra happened, Down East Magazine added it to their, to their scavenger hunt. And so you had people from all over Maine come to take pictures of the zebra, presumably also to eat, you know, fill up their car with gas, et cetera, et cetera. Art is really starting to transform the city, and I really don't want to let up on the gas. Councilor Longchamp.
I agree. I, I think it is really important, so I wouldn't cut out, I'd be in favor of keeping all of that in there.
Correct.
Further questions for Director Jeffers? Did we want to, do we want to pull out anything for, for a vote? Or, well, no, not a vote, but thumbs up, thumbs down? Councilor Nagy.
So again, on the destination amenities, which wasn't, isn't really super-spelled out, is there a possibility that we can put that $50,000 to wayfinding signage for both vehicles and pedestrians? And the reason why I keep bringing this up, I mean, like, you, you stand on India Street in Portland, and there are bricks that tell you where you're going to go. You know what I mean? Like, there's, there's, if you haven't been to the city before, you don't know where things are, so.
Certainly could be. I mean, it's, I'm trying to remember back what the cost estimates were. We probably could use all of that for wayfinding signage, but it's a one-time investment in the design, and how do you do it? I remember thinking, my gosh, it shouldn't just be this hard, didn't it? It's always harder than you think it's going to be to do this stuff.
Councilor Glant.
And again, I understand the importance of economic development. My concern is, public art, I mean, I don't know how many people are going to go out and take pictures of fire hydrants in meter boxes, okay? A mural on a wall like you just talked about, I probably would agree to that. You know, that's something that somebody could earmark or get a picture of in a newspaper. So I think some of it's just frivolous, that those items, I've never been any city that I can remember that they had painted hydrants and painted boxes, you know, it just makes no sense to me. To me, that's just foolishness. So that's why I, I would not support that full amount based on that and those items. A mural on the wall, I agree with you, that's a, that's a good point. It's an attraction to bring somebody in. The signage he's talking about for destination, if it's used for that, to get people to know where they're going to go, then I could support that amount. But if it's going to be to put gongs down the end of the road, a gong show didn't do well on TV. So I don't, I don't know, we need a gong in Lewiston at this particular pine. There's other things we need to fund.
Just to be clear, a gong is not something that we're planning on buying, right, Director?
It, I, it was not specific.
Right. I mean, that's a hypothetical, is what I'm trying to say.
It was just one example. And, and to the councillor's point, I think it was, out of that 50,000, I think 25,000 of that was for a large-scale, large-scale mural. And to that, to your point, I traveled to Providence probably a decade ago for a CDBG training. I walked around the city every night for a couple of hours, because entire walls of buildings with a parking lot in front of it, and they just had these engaging murals. And I was enchanted. I have photos, I can never find them on my phone anymore. I always wanted to show people, but it really had that effect, and I've been trying to get back there since.
Councilor Sewell.
If these funds are approved and you receive these funds, will you come back to us with the projects that you want to use this fund, the funds for? For approval, or do you just choose what you want to do?
I think that's really more the Public Art Committee purview, and it's, it's.
You choose?
Not me personally.
The committee?
Yeah, the professionals, you know, the people that are really focused on putting public art here, that have also done research in other larger cities, which bring communities together, bring outsiders in to visit, which, as the mayor mentioned, you know, people coming to see murals also invite people to go out to eat, get gas, there's, there's so much to it.
So once these funds are, are handed out, we just sit and wait to see what you're going to do? Like, yeah?
Well, I honestly have not been that close to the public art process. I will say Joe Philopon, who's on the Police Department, has also privately fundraised. He has a nonprofit, I think it's called College, or Art for Me, the little acronym, so, and he has done quite a bit, many of the murals, larger-scale murals, he's been the driving force behind, and so this would help support that. The building L.A. Arts is in, across from Rainbow Bike, that was funded. There's another one up in the tree streets that, I'm trying to think who was in there, but it was a very.
The Bird of Paradise one?
Yeah, I think it's called Birds of Paradise, the J, the Blueb, Blue Jay on Main Street.
I'm all for beautifying Lewiston. I just would like to know more details of where the funds are going. That's, I don't know how I feel about painted fire hydrants either, but.
Yep.
I know, like, Belfast, they used to have big carved statues all around the city. That was really cool.
Yep.
I just don't know about electrical boxes.
I, I would love to, oh, sorry, don't you finish, Councilor. I would love to invite the council on a walking tour of fire hydrants and electrical boxes, because we have a turtle at the end of Lisbon Street that is quite exquisite. We have an octopus on, on this end, and there's flowers on, I think it's chestnut and canal. And, yeah, I mean, is it the same wow factor as a mural? It, it is not, but it certainly adds to our city, absolutely.
It surprises and delights, I think is what you would say, but are you going, are you going to go out of your way to come take a look at our fire hydrants? Probably not.
Councilor Chittam.
Thank you. I have trouble with $425,000 of money going to economic development. When we are cutting the school budget, we are looking at dramatic increases in rent for the police station, the new police station. I am not denigrating at all the need for public art and economic development. They're essential tools. However, I look at nearly half a million dollars with no basic control, no basic understanding of where that's going. This is, this is money that we're simply, the council will simply say, here, this is for other people to decide how we're going to spend it. And I have trouble with that, particularly since we have taken some tough choices in the other departments that constitute this city. So I don't know how to proceed with this. I, I, I think every aspect of this has some merit, has a good deal of merit. However, to the extent of $425,000, I'm not certain I'm comfortable with that.
Director Jeffers, can you, so when it comes to Economic Development Reserve account, can you explain the, the thought process and how that money has been spent in the past?
Generally, they, of these, the ones that I see, 75,000, I think is sort of a non-negotiable. That's just part of what we need to do for the Bates Mill Steam Plant. The 250,000 Economic Development Reserve is really when we have needs arise by businesses that are either expanding or trying to get here, but they're undercapitalized, they're probably not going to be, especially with startup restaurants and whatnot, typically don't have the resources to do a, get a bank to, to give them a loan for a new hood system or an Ensel system or those type things, or they just need equipment, or they need furniture fixtures and equipment to get up and running. We would be part of the pot of money they can come to, so it supports that. It does not need to be a grant, so I don't see this as an annual allocation. I'd like to think in time it'll become self-supporting, to Councilor Nagy's point. We're going to start having TIFs that are going to start kicking off revenues, still a couple of years out, but that will also be used to capitalize these funds. But out of the, I think it was 479,000 is what we've allocated over the last couple of years, and just things in the pipeline. If they were all approved, there's 400, almost a little over $400,000 already allocated. So we have 60, 70,000 worth of money that we could help use to leverage these. And I'm not saying all those that were knocking at the door are ultimately going to be funded. That's part of the evaluation, and I'm always careful, you need to have a business plan, we need to have the opportunity to review it. It's the loan qualification committee will analyze it, look at it, and say, yes, this is a good investment, that the city will see some return on investment on. It's not simply to fund organizations or businesses that really probably need to do a little more homework, or have more skin in the game themselves. So it's part of that evaluation.
I'm glad you mentioned the loan. I was looking at, and I don't know whether they were CDBG funds or not, that, that were various types of housing loans. What is the collection rate on that? I've seen, I've seen some of these, it was just recent, and I'm sorry I don't have the specifics, but I saw that there was a, a $250 loan that's been outstanding since 1992 or some bizarre number like this. There are a number of these loans that appear just to be in limbo. Are those ultimately written off, or how, how's the collection rate on?
Collection, I don't have a percentage, but I can say collection rate, and Director Roy is on the loan committee as well. Probably a handful of times a year, there's a loan that we just, we just can't get collection on. That small one you're speaking of, that may have been a security deposit, that was given out, that really should have been a grant, but because of issues going on between Lewiston and Auburn at the time, that the Community Development Director in Auburn said, this is a great way for people to have a, you know, a $25 a month payment, and it'll allow them to rebuild their credit. So there was a reason and purpose behind it. Ultimately, we had some of them who just chose not to pay, and so it's sitting on the credit as, and they should, they should be written off. They should be, I have not looked closely at, sort of the active loans that we've got working. There are a couple that are challenging. We do send them to the city's law firm, to send a more firm letter than what we can generate internally. We usually get compliance, but over the last year, I can think of maybe two loans that we've written off, or, and didn't make them disappear, we're just saying, okay, this is not, the amount left is not worth, and we're also typically a third or fourth place behind a primary bank. So for us to foreclose, we have to pay off the people in front of us to get our money back. So you just go through that exercise, you make the decision.
I think I'd like to see ultimately, not, not tonight or in the near future, but ultimately in accounting of the loans that have been made through block grants or through the balances that are being maintained by economic development, so we get a handle on just how many of these are bad debts that really should be written off, and how many we should be working harder to collect.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that. I mean, I know we'd sort of sent a list, I think it was over the last 15 years, here's all the loans made.
Councilor Nagy.
Just on, on this point as well, since we're talking about it, at some point in time, I think it would be great if the Economic Development Department could give us kind of like a state of the economy, the state, the state of economic development, like, maybe even yearly, and eventually set some targets for, for tax base that we could possibly aim at in the future. Because it's, I think it's critical at this point that, that we increase our tax base.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I, I mean, our Economic Development Department has been understaffed and underfunded for, for quite some time, and I, I realize that 400 and, what did this add up to, Councilor Chittam?
In round numbers, 425,000.
This 425,000 is certainly a lot, but I think, yeah, we need, we need to, we need to make strides, and this is part of how we do that. Councilor Longchamp.
Back to the art stuff, the mural. Did you say, Director, that there was a price amount for the mural?
In the, in the request?
Yes.
It included, it sort of an accounting, I think it was $25,000 was the number.
And I think on that, wasn't there some specifics on what they were going to do with this 52,000?
Let's see, reading directly, $5,000, great mini murals on the electrical boxes, that was 250 per box, 20 boxes. $2,000 for sidewalk murals painted by local artists, again, eight murals, 250 per mural. It was 25,000 for a large-scale mural, which is being funded by the Street Art for Me, which is the, not professor, Joe Philopon's initiative. And that is a, a large mural, and is maybe working with some local murals to help them making a transition from painting on canvas or relatively small, to be able to make that go to something like the zebra on the side of a parking garage, is, is, is challenging. And so that was part of the thinking with the 25,000. And then there was 5,000 for community arts initiatives, and youth performances, Downtown Block Party, and create visual arts for exhibits on the Art Walk. And then, honestly, I'm not sure what the window wrap project is. Maybe that is for, it's $5,000 each, I'm thinking that might be for improving windows in the downtown on retail.
Councilor Longchamp, did you have any other questions?
So we do, we do have a breakdown.
Yes.
Of what, that money? So I just want to share that with you. Yes.
Councilor Nagy.
Just to clarify, this funding goes to the Public Art Committee, correct? So, so like, all of this funding goes to the Public Art Committee, which isn't part of the economic development? What I'm saying is, is this 52,000 that's listed here is listed as economic development, but it's.
The request was coming from us, but it was really to funnel it there, and between L.A. Arts and the Art Committee, which are kind of joined at the hip, but that is where the funding would help to support initiatives that they're doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Just for clarification, if I'm not mistaken, the Public Art Committee has really lived under economic development.
Yes.
Councilor Herrmann.
Yes, I just wanted to speak to the, the window wrap project, because several of these things, I was on the Public Art Committee up until January, and several of these things we discussed while I was on there. So the window wrap is, it's basically a way to, to create art on, the thought was, take a vacant storefront on Lisbon Street or another street somewhere, and there's a, I believe it's at Bates College, they have a printer that will print this vinyl decal, basically. And you can take, take any digital art and turn it into this giant decal, and it, it just adheres to the window. It's more of a, a temporary thing, but it just sort of livens up those spaces where the, where you have empty windows.
That's great. Thank you. It's what I would have guessed, but it's nice to have somebody who's in the thing. I mean, Misty used to be on the committee, and, and Jacqueline Crusette's now on the committee, so I hear about it, but I'm not on the committee myself to know about it. So my apologies for not being there first.
At this point, unless there are further questions about something specific, can I just get the temperature of the council for all of this whole amount, for these four items? All right. Thank you.
So line 77 is the airport for technical upgrades. They are requesting 40,000 for gate upgrades for a new operator and safety features out at the airport, video surveillance for terminal build points of sales, and 50,000 for monitors, and then an access control with new card readers and keyboards for 40,000, and a vehicle fuel system management to mirror those used by two other airports, estimated at 20,000. So the new card reader key pads are going to be used for individuals, like the pilots and the individuals, lifelike, to be able to get in and out of the gates. It'll be more secure. When the president flew in, they found out there was a lot of security upgrades that they have to do. So this would be used for the technical piece of that.
Who currently serves, which councillor currently serves on the Airport Board? Councilor Chittam, did you have thoughts on all that, or was that discussed?
Yes, these have been discussed, and it's difficult, because when I have my Airport Board hat on, I think differently than I do when I have my City Council hat on. Right now, I have my City Council hat on, and I'm thinking of the people who are living on fixed incomes and, and struggling to make their tax bills. So it's possible for a person to have two different minds, and, and I'm guilty of that. I want to clarify that this is split 50/50 with the City of Auburn.
Correct.
And that the 176,250 request is for Lewiston's share of a 350-plus thousand-dollar project. There are a number of individual elements in this, and while I'm enthused about them while I'm sitting over there in the Airport Board, I am not so enthused about them sitting here at the council days. I would propose that we do the same thing. I would propose that we do the same thing that I suggested with the school department, and although I don't know how this would work with Auburn, because we can't communicate directly with them, but I would propose that we reduce this by a certain amount, and then turn it back to the airport to say, how are you best going to spend these funds? What would be your priorities?
I know that the airport has really started to turn around. Our Counselor Chidim or Director Roy, so are we on track to make money this year at the airport?
Yes.
I believe we are, and I have to credit Jonathan Labonte, his name came up earlier, he has been wearing several hats over there in Auburn, one of which has been the director of the airport, as well as being the chairman of the board, the president of the airport board, and it's due to his efforts that the airport has seen a dramatic turnaround from the fiscal disaster that it was a year and a half ago. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
Director Roy?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you both, and I would, I guess, rather than just arbitrarily, you know, decide on a reduction of the amount, is, you know, go back to the airport director, and possibly Auburn, and figure out what makes the most sense, since we're on track to turn a profit, that we will then share in, and could these items help further the profit that we'll be getting, et cetera? I guess I just want to have that conversation before we randomly decide tonight. Counselor Chidim.
Well, I think that's the way to initiate this conversation, Mr. Mayor, is for the council to say, yes, we can afford to give the airport, this, by the way, is in addition to the annual stipend of 215,000?
205.
205, I'm sorry.
205,000.
I had a lot of numbers going around up in here, but I think that's the way to start this conversation, is to say, this is what we can afford, now let's sit down and talk about how we are best going to use this.
Thoughts from counsel, or, sorry, Director Roy?
So we meet the second Wednesday of the month, we would need to wrap this up before that meeting, so I would agree with Counselor Chidim, if you're gonna take and give an amount, then the board will then look at what the best priorities are for that amount.
And theoretically, that would also result in a reduction from what Auburn spends as well.
Correct, because they share, so if we're not going to give the full amount, Auburn will then reduce theirs.
Could we perhaps check in with the airport director over email? I realized that the board won't meet for a little bit, but.
I can send an email, but I'll send an email tomorrow morning, and ask him to get back to us before Thursday's meeting, so that I can have that information for you for Thursday night.
Counselor Najin.
Just really quickly, because you're the person who has the most experience on this, what number are you looking to name?
I would be looking at 150,000.
So reducing it by approximately 26,000?
That's right.
How does the rest of the council feel about this? Counselor Herrmann, did you have something?
Yeah, if it's a smaller reduction like that, I'd be fine with just approving that tonight, and I think that they can, the airport can figure out where they want to put the money, and what are priorities.
Counselor Najin.
Contingent on Auburn also agreeing, because it's a matching fund, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Can they?
And then perhaps, yeah, waiting to hear what the director thinks. Yeah, I mean, I would rather decide based on some data and some input from the director, rather than just arbitrarily deciding on an amount. But I guess we will proceed for now.
So do we want to reduce this for 150,000, and then I will send an email and confirm with him?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess my question at that point would be, what impact would this have at the airport, and how would this affect things? Counselor Chidim, did you have something else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm having some trouble, because it seems to me that we are the funding source, and it's up to us to decide what we can and can't afford for any of these programs, and for us to say, well, we, first of all, I don't think we can afford this, and that's why I proposed a reduction, and for us to say, we don't think we can afford it, but you convince us that we can, is putting the cart very much in front of the horse. So it's our decision as to how to fund these various programs, these departments, these agencies, and I think asking them to tell us how they want to be funded is not what our job is.
Thank you. What's next, Director Roy?
So next is line 78, which is 50,000, to the transit for the local share of the bus replacements.
Who serves on that committee here?
I do.
Counselor Chidim.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I support this, we need to get the purple buses running, and keep them up and running throughout the city, so I have no problems with this 50,000 request, which, by the way, is shared with Auburn as well.
Counselor Herrmann.
Thank you, I was the previous representative on the transit committee, and I would also just add that, you know, we typically put in this amount every year, and when the buses are purchased, we get a lot of matching funding from federal and state levels, so it really goes a long way, our match does.
Counselor Glenn.
Thank you, Mayor, do we have any decision making with what type of buses? I'm really afraid they're going to go electric, and we already see the problems we're having in Bangor and other places due to the winter, so do they just buy them, or will they come back to the city and say, we're thinking about going electric?
Mr. Mayor.
Administrator.
I also sit on the committee with Counselor Chidim and with Counselor Herrmann, we've had those discussions, and we are not going the electric route based on the issues with the cold weather, the infrastructure that we'd have to go to, and the price is much higher, so at this time, there's no way that we're going to go with the electric.
Thank you, sir.
Are we good with that, counsel?
The next line, 79, is for the workers' comp reserve of 250,000, currently it is at 1.9 million, and as I mentioned, the actuary report shows that our shortfall is about 5 million.
I think we're good. All right, well, Counsel Herrmann has a question.
Do we get dinged on our, like, our credit rating, or anything like that, because this reserve is lower, or is this just sort of a best practice, that we should have a certain amount?
We should build that up, to make sure that when those older claims come through, that finally get settled, that we have those funds available. When we get our bond rating, they look at everything for the city, so, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Line 80 is 20,000 miscellaneous equipment, this is citywide, so these are replacements for when chairs break, or desks need to get replaced due to the ergonomics, this covers any type of safety, when somebody gets evaluated, when they're sitting at their desk, so this covers citywide items like that.
Counselor Chidim.
We've just heard about chairs for the Public Works Department, we have heard earlier about chairs for the Police Department, is this 20,000 wrapped in with those special requirements or requests, or?
No, this is for actual offices, so the one at Public Works will be for their training room, where you guys have your finance committee meetings, and the Police Department is for the new Police Department when they move in. These are for other locations, for the office areas, for where individuals sit.
Okay, I was, let's imagine for a second that the Police Department is remaining on Park Street. I was in the conference room on the second floor the other day, and there were some chairs that were beginning to fall apart. Under normal circumstances, would this money be used to replace the chair in the Police Department conference room?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Glenn.
I have no problem with the chairs, or, you know, like the ones we're sitting on. My question is, earlier in this process, I questioned the Chair Center, and it wasn't about how much we were paying them, I was concerned that we had individual departments, can we not get a citywide share from them, pay more money, I'm not saying knock it down any, so that any department can go over there and look for chairs, in case there might be something decent over there, I mean, offices like this, where they have to match, so somebody could go over there and see a nice chair and pick it up?
So, when we had a desk in our office, for when we had a new individual come into our finance office, the desk that was there was a desk that was built from Public Works back in the days, and it was so short, that that individual's knees were hitting, and from what I understand, before, they used to put blocks on them, which is not security, if something falls on somebody. So when we were looking at that, I asked if it was possible for them to look at the Chair Center, so we do use those options, even though we're not part of that, because we wouldn't use them as much. I do call, like Louis at Public Works, asked them first if they had any desk available, they looked in their storage area, the Chair Center, so we did all of that before we went that route, so we do try to find, before we go the route of buying.
Good, thank you, excellent.
Are we good with this, counsel?
It appears so.
So next, we're on line 81, these are the items that were moved from the LCIP over to fund balance. The first one is the airport pavement management program of 150,000. We have not been repairing pavement, and it's become aware with Mr. Labonte working up there, that these repairs need to be done. So we've put in for this pavement to get our runway areas, and the areas in front of the T-hangers and all the hangers out there, to get them repaired, so that going forward, we will start to put it in our actual operating budget, but to get these items up to speed for requirements of the federal government, their request in this fund.
Counselor Chidim.
Yeah, I concur with this, the longer we let the pavement go at the airport, the more expensive it's going to be to replace, as with many things, and the FAA is not, well, it's a friendly organization, but it does have some fairly strict requirements, so this 150-plus Auburn share is necessary to maintain the integrity of the pavements, both the runways and the taxiways around the hangers at the airport.
We're good with this, counsel? The virtualization server replacement for 911?
So 911, that's, I'm pulling up the, on page 20 of the LCIP, there's a request of 150 from the city of Lewiston, 150 from the city of Auburn, for server infrastructure replacement. Plan the infrastructure replacement hardware was due to be replaced because of the end of life, or due to the age of the equipment and manufacturer and support limitations in fiscal year '23. Project was delayed to coincide with the center relocation and the cost service and measurements. This is for storage area networks, network switches, and servers.
Counselor Najin.
The only point I'd make with this is that the server does require to be upgraded, whether or not we move the center to Park Street this year. So the only question, I guess, is just some of the consolidation conversations that have happened, and whether or not that moves forward. I would suggest, again, that possibly we move this into the lower limit for fund balance, until we can find out exactly what's going on with the consolidation conversation, but regardless, this would have to be spent this year, based on, at least from my understanding, based on the issues that they're having with the server, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Minister O'Malley.
Regardless of the consolidation questions that's coming up, the county does not do any of the back, the IMC, any of this server work, so this needs to be, and they've actually pushed it off, yes, so this needs to be done, we can't push it off, we can't wait to see if we go to 85 Park Street, we go to the Subaru building over in Auburn, wherever they are, that needs to be replaced, and that isn't something that the county provides, we provide that technology to the county.
Thank you for that clarification, I think that solves it.
Counselor Chidim.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that, no matter what happens with the relocation of 911, that this server would be fully utilized in either circumstance.
Yes, that, all that technology will travel wherever they go.
All right, thank you.
Are we good with this, counsel?
Next would be the red shop preservation for 400,000.
Come on down, Director Jeffers.
Slowly.
Can you explain, yeah, a little bit?
Yeah, and this is a bit, Kevin and I were looking at each other, is this you or me?
Please join us, Director Gunn.
Us together.
They are doing the work, this is a building that, folks are down in Samar Payne Park, between the Hampton Inn and Samar Payne Park, you've got this red building that straddles the canal, it's been in terrible condition, Public Works has done quite a bit of work over the last few years to button it back up, but I was mortified that you could see, there was probably two-foot or better hole in the upper-left corner, the roof was failing, I was like, how can that building still be stable? Well, it did take some deterioration, you've done quite a bit of work, I'll let you elaborate on all the stuff you've actually done, and I can talk about the purpose of it afterwards.
Right, I mean, so FY '24, there's funds, FY '25, we've asked for funds, it is an integral part, we do have gates on this canal that controls the level of the lower canal, so the cross canal down from the upper, next to Baxter, comes down into there, so we are controlling the lower level of canal from this as well, so we do have some operational needs there, and some of the vision has been to get this structurally sound, and then maybe move ahead with another use. Jeff Bowley, our city engineer, has been overseeing that project and coordinating with that, so we might be able to tell you next phase with what we have with funds.
Engineer Bowley, could you fill us in?
Sure, I don't know if you're looking at page 34 in your LCIP book, has a breakdown of the estimate from the architect for what is proposed, as was said, we have about, I believe about $200,000 in previous funding, which was intended more for shell preservation, just to make it structurally sound. Now, this additional funding actually is a full renovation of the interior, which is proposed to actually make it usable space, and able to be rented out, or leased for a variety of uses, that would go along with activities in the park, or potentially the hotel next door, other uses.
Yeah, and that's where, oh, thank you, that's where I'll pick it up, is the last council had given the directive to really work with the owner of the Hampton Inn, who has expressed interest in this building since before he developed the Hampton, it was actually part of the tax increment financing package that we put together to help get the Hampton built, and it was actually a clause in that agreement, that he would have taken it as-is, and there were some triggers within that agreement that ultimately didn't come to be, and COVID sort of complicated all of that, but I'll actually be meeting with him sort of complicated all of that. But I'll actually be meeting with him again tomorrow to start talking about how they would like to use it. Some of the concepts have been, you know, as a small gathering spot to support work at the Hampton Inn. He is also the owner of Thompson's Point down in Portland, where they have the concert venues. We'd like to start bringing that sort of element up here, not the large-scale, at least not in the near term, no large-scale concerts, but we have an amphitheater over there. So, just starting to get some regular activity down there, start having folks using that corner of it. It would be used to help support work with the River Fest Festival and special events. There's been a variety of thoughts and purposes that they have been just, and he's still, as part of the conversation tomorrow is, Chris, how would you like to see, how do you folks see this being used? And this driving force has always been to bring more energy and people and bodies down in the park and using it.
Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. How much have we invested already in this building? Do you know?
200. The only construction we've done so far is on the foundation. We rebuilt the foundation underneath to have a solid working space and then just the architect's costs.
So, I guess my question is, if I look at this page 34, 629,000 plus 200, coming up on a million dollars, and how do we plan on recouping a million dollars by letting the hotel rent it for a couple hundred bucks at a time? Is it cost feasible? Because I understand the plumbing and the canal stuff, to tear it down and put a little building over that particular part that we need and save 600, 700,000 for the city? I'm just, you know, for me, I haven't looked at it, thinking in my mind, it's going to be very limited based on size and square footage. You know, you might do a small venue wedding or, you know, like we do with the, I forget right now, meet and greet type things. So, it's not really like you can do an outdoor concert there. You might get some guy in there playing guitar and some tables.
And it'd be almost more like the green room for a larger concert or VIP room for other events.
Right, and I understand the economics of, all these people might come to these events, but we're looking at $800,000 investment in something that's falling down technically right now. There's no guarantee we're not going to find other problems as we move forward. So, I'm just wondering if it's a good bang for a buck. I would like somebody to convince me that, I guess. Thank you.
Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. I see that plumbing and fixtures are one of the line items here. Would that also include bathrooms to support any events there or in the park?
We've been working to get bathroom facilities in there. Last year, we ran utilities into the building. It's not a heated space. Prior to this revision, it was actually the carpentry shop for maintenance work. So, they actually would use hydropower from underneath to turn these large saws to cut these timbers to make repairs to different weirs and different carpentry all over the canals. So, this was a central part of that. The up riverside of it is the gates that hold back the water to maintain those levels. So, you know, I totally hear what you're saying about another piece, kind of the vision was this deck on the riverside and maybe there's a top roof. I don't know. We've been trying to shore up the foundations, get it operational. We've been, we brought water and sewer into it. So, there was a bathroom there before, prior to the Clean Water Act, and things went through the river. So, you know, there is a bathroom there for workers, but right now, it's a timber frame structure, no heat. We do electricity in there because we do have that, those motorized gates to be able to control the level.
Thank you.
Counselor Najin.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the red shop was originally the sawmill that cut the timbers for all of the Bates Mill pieces. So, I guess there's a question there about like if it qualifies for historic tax credits at all and if there's any way to apply for any of those pieces, because I think that's a pretty, the history of the building in and of itself, and I understand it's timber and it's probably been replaced a few times, but when we first went in there, that saw that originally cut the timbers in the Bates Mills was sitting there. And so, you know, there's a question as to whether or not we can get some funding from that point. But I would say, if you look at Thompson's Point and the structure that exists there with the mill that exists there now and the fact that it was a marsh, like literally a marsh, seeing how that functions, and I would throw this out, and not everybody thinks about this, but Hampton Inn doesn't have a bar at all. And so, like if you stay there, you can't like go to the bar, which is a common thing to do in a hotel. So, I think there's pieces there. It really depends on, one, what the owner of the Hampton Inn is proposing, but, two, whether or not we can offset some of this pricing by acquiring some type of historical tax credit.
Tax credit's a good question. I will admit, I had not thought about it there. Typically, you need to have a commercial purpose there and since the city's been a non-taxable entity, but if, depending on the agreement with the Hampton, that might be a possibility. Structure of it is also complicated to delay. It's multiple layers and you also need to meet National Park Service standards to qualify.
You want to do it for National Park Service?
Yeah, but, no, I mean, it's just challenging. The Park Service says, here's what you can do. And the building currently, I believe, has asbestos brick-looking signing on it. And so, will the Park Service say, you got to keep it, that's historic, or can we do something more? So, those are some of the elements. It's something worth exploring.
The canals in and of themselves are also historic, right?
Yeah.
And were built by the history of the people who originally immigrated here during the mill period. So, I mean, I'm just saying that that might be a better avenue, even if we had to divest from like the ownership of it on some level, like still holding the ability to actually control the weirs than to take $400,000 from fund balance, so.
Counselor Chittam, did you have something?
Yes, thank you. So, the $400,000, is that a part of the $629,000 that's in the LCIP? I heard Counselor Glant talking about a million dollars and I'm having a trouble under.
We're not asking for this full 629 because of the funds that we already have from previous year. So, it's the 400 plus the 200 that we have.
Okay.
Wouldn't quite get us the full contingency that they have in here, but.
So, where, maybe the counsel, maybe the question is for Counselor Glant, where does the million dollars come from?
Do you mind using your mic, please?
You're at 629, they've already spent over 200. That's 829,000. That's pretty close to a million.
But the 200,000 is included in the 629, is it not?
No. It's all new work. Is that page 34, all new work?
The 200 previously spent would be added to the 629.
Okay, all right.
So, you may get to 800. I just want to also point out that this includes that $218,000 deck in the front, which is a, you know, it would be a really cool addition, but something that could be cut back if you decide to.
So, in other words, if we, if we cut this request from the fund balance in half, then the victim of that, if you will, would be the cool deck overlooking the river or overlooking the canal, which way is it, whatever way.
Right, it would be sitting right over the canal, looking towards the river.
Okay.
But we would still have a viable project, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Director Jeffers, so, do we have, what are things with the Hampton for this?
Quite a bit of interest, quite a bit of ideas, but nothing formally yet. I mean, we've been trying to move it forward.
And you're meeting tomorrow?
I will have a phone call with them tomorrow, yes. And it'll be the second or third time specifically on this topic. And we talked about a lot of issues over the years. This is a recurring theme. You know, he's talked about bringing in, you know, sort of the permanent ice skating rink like they have down at Thompson's Point under a pole barn. There's ice skating. They had a yurt next to that. I think missile brothers was in and served beer. And early on, there was talk of using it as a canoe livery or kayak rental spot. I think they're looking for ideas and concepts. And the idea behind this was to have the minimal infrastructure in place to allow it to happen. We were not looking to make it turnkey for them. If they need a higher food service than what is laid out here, that would be on their dime. If they want a deck, maybe that's something that we say, that's on your dime. So, I think there's some room there for negotiation as well as part of whatever agreement has come to with them.
Okay. Would it be possible for you to, you know, gauge the level of serious interest at this point, share our concerns, and then at this point, we'll be meeting again on Thursday and you could theoretically come back to us on Thursday with an update for this?
Sure.
Okay. Is counsel amenable to that?
Yes.
Okay. Director Roy.
Next is line 84, which is City Hall, City Hall building window replacements of 86,500.
Director Turcot.
Yeah, so, this project's been talked about and requested for a number of years. It's well-known, there's a number of windows in City Hall that have had issues. They're aged at the end of their life. So, we approached Harriman Architects, who worked with us on the library window restoration project, and they provided the proposal that the number's based on. That would take us through full design, full window replacement design and phasing and historic review process. So, go ahead.
Counselor Chittam.
What percentage of the windows overall would, $85,000?
The design would cover what to do with every window in the building, including stained glass and everything else.
So, this is design only?
Design only.
All right. So, we're looking at another $800,000 worth of windows on top of the design?
Correct.
Okay. The, what's the urgency? I know, I know this has been pushed off for three, four, five years. Do we have water leaks? Do we have drafts? Do we have, what do we have that's pushing this issue here in City Hall?
In areas, yes. We have water leaks. We have drafts. We have, on the backface of the building, we tend to get more wind. The panning has blown off. We're working on, we're doing temporary repairs on that this year. We're at probably $14,000 in window panning just to cover that repair. We've actually had window glazing fall out of some of the Anderson windows that you crank out, fall onto the sidewalk. A lot of the windows are inoperable. The staff cannot get the air flow when they need to.
This building has no HVAC?
It does.
Okay, the windows really shouldn't be operable then anyway, should they?
Given the age of the building, there's a bunch of people that argue with you. It's not, the system's not perfect.
Okay. In an ideal world?
Correct.
With an adequately sized HVAC system, the windows would be fixed.
You'd fix them all and make my life simpler.
All right. And is that something that, well, is that something that is anticipated to be addressed in the near future?
We could. We could have that in the review from the architect.
Okay.
And they'll also, as I've told them upfront, that this involves probably phasing and picking out the highest priority windows so we can come back and address that next year's budget.
The design that would result from the expenditure of this $86,000 would be a design with no shelf life, per se, would it? In other words, the $860,000 actual construction cost could be phased over a number of years using the original design, I'm assuming.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions about this? Anything you want to add, Director Gagne? How's the council feel about this? Move forward. Vehicles for Public Works. Yes. We're going to pause here for just one second so we have a quick conversation. So, the time is 9:44. We have not progressed as fast as I thought we would. Chances are, we could be, Director Gagne, how long do you think we'd be talking about this 1.248 million dollar ask?
I can give a two-minute, three-minute summary if, depends on what the detail gets into, so.
Right.
Yep.
And then, we have yet to move forward to new programs and services. Administrator O'Malley, your thoughts at this point?
Judging by the tired faces on my directors, they probably want to continue this on Thursday if that's, if we're going to start new programs and services.
How do the directors in Department Heads feel?
They all want to go home. They all have to be back here, you know, 8 o'clock in the morning, so.
Okay, all right. Then, maybe we will, we will keep these two for a little while longer. And do we have a Public Works on this? Yeah, because we could finish off this with you two, correct? Director Roy, did you have feedback?
I'm just asking who's going to be speaking on the public restroom. That individual needs to stay. That.
Is that, where is that here? Or is that in new programs and services?
It's on line 86.
86, okay, all right. Megan, you're okay to stick around? Okay. You're a trooper. And then Administrator O'Malley, are you suggesting we cut everyone else loose at this point?
Yes, I am.
Okay. You, thank you for your patience. I deeply appreciate it and I will be ecstatic to see you here on Thursday.
So, the vehicles he's going to be talking about are on your LCIP book on page 78.
So, for Lewiston Public Works, the two and three entities that own vehicles, one is Public Works, and that's the tax side of the house. And then, the two enterprise funds, water and sewer, each own their own vehicles. So, this list is explicitly, Phil, under the municipal garage, Phil Branza. We talked about that earlier and how this is funded. So, these vehicles are owned and managed by him and then rented to the different divisions for uses and cross charges. Those are built in. So, there's internal charges to be able to pay for this. And the biggest piece of this is that the money is established so we can replace it in a timely fashion. I would, I'll let Phil go through the details of each unit, but the reality is, we do keep units longer than we probably should. You've heard that several times over the last couple of meetings. The other thing we've tried to do is keep a unit so that as long as it's feasible to do so, if we still have a usable life spot of it and don't incur a big repair. Unfortunately, the last couple of years, with the delivery being two, three years out on a vehicle, that sometimes has not worked out. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Phil if he wants to go over.
And do you mind, well, we'll turn it over to you, Phil, first, but can you just move the mic a little closer to you?
Just probably list them all out.
Yeah. So, the first item on here would be the sidewalk tractor. Those are the units that we commonly use to blow snow and clear snow in the wintertime. In the summertime, they're a big part of the sweeping program early on, early on in the season. That unit, it's, like I say, it's 2008. It's well past its life expectancy. The cost of that unit is $195,000. We have two trailer dumps. One of the trailer dumps that we have is, was totaled in an accident last summer, so that's off the road. The other one, which is the one that should be up for replacement, which is also listed on here, is just rotted out and stuff because that unit's a 2005. That total cost is estimated to be $220,000 to buy the two trailer dumps. Now, those units are used primarily for snow removal in the wintertime. That's what the large snow blower blows into them and that hauls twice as much snow as the largest straight dump truck that we have. So, they move a large portion of the snow that we haul out of downtown. So, they're a pretty nested, pretty nested vehicle. We have the electrical service truck. Several years ago, the electricians were now paid standby employees. They don't really have a vehicle for them to use besides their bucket truck, so they borrow different pickup trucks to use to take home and they have to come in and get tools or take the bucket truck, whereas with this truck there, we could have. or take the bucket truck, whereas with this truck, there we could have all of the parts, you know, basic hand tools that they need. They wouldn't need to take the bucket truck. I mean, bucket trucks are a three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar item, so. This way here, that would cut down the wear and tear on that, and, you know, fuel costs and everything else, repair costs. The next item is, that was an eighty-thousand-dollar item. The next two items is two half-ton pickup trucks. These trucks are thirteen years old. One of them is presently at the landfill. The other one is actually used by the safety officer here at the city. They're both just very old, rusty, you know, they're... People look at our trucks, and they see the outside, and they, yeah, they're yellow, and they're kind of pretty, but what you don't see is the problem that we have, is the undercarriages, the frames are gone. I think these ones here, the pickup beds are starting to rust out and stuff, so the total on those two together is supposed to be ninety-seven thousand dollars. The next item was a hydrocedar. This would be an addition to the fleet. In the past, and the way we do it now, is we spray, we put bales of hay in a machine that shred it up and blow it out of a hose to cover over the seed, and for, you know, they spread seed by hand, they spread fertilizer by hand, or, you know, small, and then they cover it with hay. The hay doesn't stay well, especially the way winds are lately, it just blows away, it doesn't do any good. The hydroseeding process, it's much more precise as far as the seed, because all of it is mixed in the machine and sprayed on, although you don't know how the whole process works, but even when dried, it doesn't really blow away, because it kind of, it's made out of the mulch's paper, so it dries into almost like cogwort if it gets totally dry, and then once it gets rehydrated. So it holds moisture longer, the seed generates faster. You can also spray wildflower mixes and everything else. You don't have to just spray grass with it, there's other things that you can spray with it. That's a fifty-eight-thousand-dollar purchase, and that would also, would never include a trailer to mount it on. Steep terrain, remote-controlled steep terrain mower. Replacing a old riding lawnmower that doesn't really fit into our fleet, it's not really practically used. We inherited it from the parks department years ago, when they became part of the Public Works department. The remote-controlled steep terrain mower is for areas that we can't put people on, on the riding equipment that we have. It's just too steep, it's all overgrown. The, let's see, the, this machine, it's controlled like six hundred feet away with a remote control, one person can try it. We've actually been demoing them for years, that's how we keep cutting the entrance to the high school, is we demo the machine for the day, and we cut it, and, you know, so we've demoed like four or five different machines over the years, and, you know, we just, it's just something that we need, because it's a safety concern. I mean, in the past, some of those areas were done by six or eight guys with weed whackers, you know, it could take them days to do it and whatnot. So, I mean, you know, it's a productivity thing, it's a safety thing, at the forty-thousand-dollar price tag. It can be driven up into the back of a pickup truck or onto a small trailer, and, you know, taken anywhere in the city. The next item would be a one-ton plow truck with a brine tank in it. So this is replacing existing one-ton plow truck, which doesn't have, it just has a dump body in the back, this one would have a slide-in brine tank, which that would go along with the brine system that we purchased in twenty-twenty-three to help be able to apply it to the streets, you know, before the storm starts. This one also, being a smaller unit, will have a hose, so you could take it and spray staircases or whatever, you know, off the edges of the road, that type of deal. So that would give that a little added, you know, added use for that vehicle. That's a hundred and thirty-thousand-dollar estimated replacement cost, like I said, that truck is twenty-eleven. Ten-wheel plow truck, that's replacing a two thousand and seven triaxle. The triaxle truck only has sanding and dirt hauling capabilities, which, it slides, it doesn't fit into a lot of places that the ten-wheelers do, so we're exchanging, downsizing that truck to a ten-wheel to put full plow gear on it, which gives us a little plowing unit, and gets rid of a dedicated sander. After that, we'll have two dedicated mid-sized sand trucks, and we can't put plow gear on those, because they don't fit in the alleyways if you do, so those trucks will never have plow gear on them, but this one can be used elsewhere with plow gear on it. So that'll have a two-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-dollar price tag on that. Roll-off truck, the landfill. We presently own two trucks, we used to have three, then when they got rid of the ash hauling, they got rid of the third truck, which wasn't a good idea, because ever since then, we've struggled, because the trucks, as, you know, we keep saying, we keep them way too long. I mean, most municipalities keep their vehicles about twelve years. And the one that we're looking to replace, or we're purchasing, the oldest one after this one, is a two thousand and five or six. It's got a lot of miles. It's presently used by, primarily by the power generating plant over in Auburn, that's part of our contract. We have to supply that with a truck, just to take the cans when they're full in and out of the building, and then we pay to have them haul, have the ash hauled away. So that truck doesn't leave their parking lot unless we need a truck. So I've asked for this truck, even though we only have three, to have a third, because that truck that's over there is near the end of its life. We may get a few more years out of it if we're lucky, without any major costs. So, like Kevin had mentioned a little while ago, you could be two years before you see a truck nowadays, and we can't be without a truck. Right now, we're down to one truck, because our newer truck lost a large hydraulic cylinder yesterday, so we're down to one two thousand and four truck, which hopefully doesn't die, because they're not easy to come by, so. Pots are on the way for the other one, but it could be several days or so before we see them. So there's a two-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-dollar price tag on that. Like I said, the one that's over there, the generating plant, we'll keep that one going as long as we can, and hope for the best with that. The last item that's on here would be site sought, the slide-in brine tank, that's for another existing truck that we already have, that has a sander, with these units. The sanders in these slide-in trucks can come out in a few minutes, they have legs and stuff, they just slide them out. So early on, we'd have, you know, several bigger tankers that we could go around and treat the major arteries and stuff with, before the storms. And that completes the list of vehicles. Do you have questions about any of them?
Director Gagne, did you have something you wanted to add?
I was trying to check with Director Roy. I think the initial request of CIP was one million three hundred and forty-six thousand before you, and the budget is one million two hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred, a difference of ninety-seven-five, so we're just trying to find what, I believe the, I think it was the electric service truck and the hydrocedar were either deferred or cut.
Counselor Nagin.
Just real quickly, are all of these vehicles able to be obtained in this calendar year? So basically, I'm asking if we're budgeting for it, are we going to be able to get the vehicles? That's one piece.
We can get them ordered.
Okay, gotcha.
But if we don't order them this year, then next year, it's still going to be the same thing.
Okay.
Steel and sealed electronics are the biggest issue with everything these days, and everything on this list is pretty much steel and electronics.
Generally, if we haven't been funded, we don't place an order.
And we know that things get more expensive the more years we wait. Okay. So just a, two quick comments. On the auto mower piece, I know there are probably some embankments that we do want to mow, but generally, we'd want to shore up embankments and plant them with species that would keep...
These are pretty much existing areas. Some of them have never been mowed, you know, some of them have been mowed once in a great while, like I say, by, people go in there with brush cutters and weed whackers, but like I say, we don't have the staff for that anymore.
So it's not a finish mower?
No, it's for cutting down brush.
Oh, so it's like a brush hog?
Right, it's not a finish mower, no.
Okay, perfect. And then last, on the loader with the tipping fees, like, the question is, we're hauling fourteen municipalities ash to our landfill, and is there any possibility that we could consider wrapping in the cost of the loader into those fees eventually? Is that, am I correct on that? Is that what that, the, the hauler, excuse me?
The roll-off truck?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because, I mean, it is an operating cost, right? Granted, we're picking up ash and we're bringing it back, that's from us, but there's another thirteen municipalities.
That's in the existing agreement, so we'd have to look at the existing agreement and those costs and associated with that. So there is, off-topic, but we'll come to it when you get to it, there's a new service request to be able to save some money by not contracting ash hauling with doing our own. But we can revisit the agreement with those considerations.
Counselor Longchamp, did you have something?
No.
Okay. Counselor Herman.
Thank you. So that was one of my questions, was, is this roll-off truck tied to the new program ask of the ash hauler, ash hauling employee, or is this still...
This one eventually would stay here, and if the other one eventually died, then we would move the next oldest truck that way. I mean, they, they just move stuff from the building and inside all day, you know, every so many hours, they switch cans out. So they just put in, take in new, Phil will pull one out, put an empty one in, and then, like I say, either it would be us or the company we have contracted to haul the ash, would pick it up from there and take it to the landfill.
Okay, thank you. I've got a couple other questions. So I think that the Director Gagne mentioned the electrical service truck and the hydrocedar. I think that may have just been a suggestion from Counselor Galant to cut those items. It seems to me that the justification for them is there, especially the hydrocedar, I think would, you know, with the labor savings and the better, the better results that you would get from that, would be worth it. The service truck, if it could reduce the maintenance costs on the bucket truck, I think that could be helpful. So that was the next thing. And my last question is on the two half-ton pickup trucks. They both have less than fifty thousand miles, but are they, but the rust has gone to them?
It's all rusting out and everything, yeah. Most of our trucks don't, you know, if we see over a hundred thousand on a third of our trucks, most of them, we get rid of, probably have anywhere from fifty to sixty or seven thousand miles.
We have a handful of supervisor or standby trucks, which, somebody's going to their home, they're on call, they're going to need to respond directly to the scene. Those tend to get more mileage that you would think a resident would have, or a commuter would have. The rest of it is idle time and time spent in the winter conditions that just take a toll on it.
Okay, thanks, that's all I've got for now.
Yeah, well, everyone's at home in their cars in the garage, you guys are on the road driving vehicles. Counselor Roy, did you have something? Counselor Sol? You, oh, please use your mic.
What do you do with the vehicles? Are you looking to replace all the vehicles, or are you adding?
These would be replaced.
Well, the hydrocedar would be an addition.
Right. What do you do with the vehicles after?
It depends on, we look at the trade value that they offer, decide whether it's acceptable. Like I say, most of our vehicles aren't worth much because of the rust, so, you know, if we can get a few thousand dollars for them, we'll take it. If it's not stickerable, then we have an online auction that we use, Auctions International, they come in, take the pictures, and then they put it online and sell it, and we take what we can get.
So you may get some back from them?
Yeah, we get the money back from that sale, which goes back into the account fund buying the trucks.
Thank you.
Counselor Chidham.
Yeah, Counselor Sol, you stole my thunder. I was going to ask what the salvage value was and where that money goes. So these are net costs that you're estimating here for the one-point-two, one-point-two-four million?
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't count too much on trades.
Well, I didn't imagine you did, but if you've been listening tonight, you know that my approach is every penny counts.
It does.
And sometimes these numbers are over, sometimes they're under, so a lot of times the overges and underses offset each other by the time you're done with this whole list.
I understand that these aren't, these aren't dealer quotes, I get that. They're your best estimate, and you're, who better than you to estimate the cost of this equipment?
Well, and I get these numbers through them, you know, I mean, I contact several different dealers, and, you know, like an average on them all.
The other question I have may seem a little strange, but I, more and more these days, when you buy an automobile or a vehicle, you end up getting all kinds of bells and whistles with it, that after the first year or first six months, you discover cost you every month, there are subscriptions.
No, we don't.
Do any of these vehicles?
They have the options for them, but we don't, we don't...
We don't buy those, we don't buy into them, okay, so...
They're never activated, you know, they'll give you, you know, a six-month trial thing, none of that's ever activated in them.
Okay, all right, good, because...
Once you start it, it's hard to get rid of them.
It is, it's impossible. A friend of mine bought a car with heated seats, he thought it was wonderful, and he discovered, until he discovered it, after six months, he was paying something like twelve dollars a month for heated seats in his car.
We don't have heated seats in any of the vehicles that I'm aware of.
That's because the Public Works Department is so hot-blooded anyway, right?
Counselor Galant.
Thank you. I want to start with the electrical service truck. Why can't we just buy a regular truck with a camper top on the back and have a rollaway toolbox? Or a van? You know, I just, eighty thousand compared to ninety-seven for two trucks.
So the vehicles we've had and used as standby have been, so we have a skate attack, he takes home a van that has a rack in it, has safety lights on it. We have pickup trucks like you're describing, we have several utility bodies, those are the outdoor paneled square box, so those are what we do have in the fleet, and I'll let Phil talk about that number.
Yeah, this is similar to, you know, like you were talking about, the service bodies in the back with the compartments on them. A lot of what they have is containerized and whatnot, so, you know, it's easy to sort it all out, they want to be able to carry, you know, basic light fixtures, photocells, things of that nature, so they're looking for storage for that stuff, so, you know, things that they, you know, traffic light control parts, things like that, things that they know go on a regular basis, so, you know, they can, they get a call, they can go right there, fix it, and not have to, okay, let's go to the shop, let's find what we need, you know, okay, we need, because right now, they're using different trucks, so they don't really even have any, much of their equipment with them, so a lot of time, it entails going there to get the equipment that they need, then going out on the road to fix it.
I do understand that, but all the lights require a bucket truck, so they'd have to come back to get that. You know, I'm just trying to...
Well, no, like the traffic, most of the light problems are at the control boxes there.
So it's street level?
That's streetlight stuff, electrical problems, you know, for all the related electrical problems.
So most likely during the week, they'll use that over a bucket truck to do routine stuff, and the bucket truck would get reduced mileage, possibly, and give it some more life.
I mean, the bucket truck, like, was three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, you know, so to run that around, in those cases, it's a toolbox, if you're not using the bucket, you know.
So the real value is not just to go home, it's, the real value is it's going to save all the way across.
When they've been responding to a traffic signal, for example, they'll go to a traffic cabinet, that cabinet sometimes is on the, on the corner of a mall or a corner of a parking lot, so to find a spot, to have the four-oh, that's the big bucket truck, is also difficult. So for them to go to on-scene with a small pickup, open the cabinet, and do repairs there, if it's more than that, they've got to have a ground person to bring the bucket truck anyway, so they're assessing, trying to see what they can to reboot, restart, do some things, troubleshoot, and then staff come in, and they do get in the bucket truck.
All right, I understand better now, but, I was thinking, somebody just having to have a ready van to go to the house and, you know, go do something quick and come back and forth, that's why I was looking at price. The hydrocedar, yes, those are the two items that I picked on. How much hydroseeding do we actually do? I know that a lot of our road work and stuff is contracted out, where they use their own hydrocedars. I mean, how often are we going to be investing in using that particular item?
I can't really say, I run the missile garage.
Right now, a lot of the winter repairs, everybody's probably getting complaints about the plow damage from the last two wet storms with thawed lawns, and we rolled lawns back, so to that degree, once we do a lawn repair, we actually put the tag and put it on the homeowner to actually water and maintain it. This ideally would reduce that dramatically, so, because they're locking in a binder, they're locking in, and it's going to sprout, and it's going to take off, so it's better moisture control overall. How much? I can't give you a number right now, but we would be leveraging it as much as possible, because otherwise, it's just hay bales, and we're trying to...
Right. All right. I think you should have one, I'm just, want to make sure I understood you knew what you were doing. Thank you.
We purchased equipment to rejuvenate fields last year, because a lot of the fields aren't the best quality here, I mean, they got a lot of clay and stuff, so...
That's what I thought.
We have the equipment to, on a tractor, a deep core, tiny aerator, to pull big plugs out of the ground, and a top dresser, which is going to go into service this year as soon as it arrives, so this was kind of, would be the...
Add on to that.
Yeah, add on to that, so once we can get the soil condition by, you know, breaking it up and...
Good, excellent.
You know, and I wanted to also add, anytime we can save, you know, a lot of the costs at Public Works in many of our departments is staff labor, right? that Public Works and many of our departments is, is staff labor, right? And so, anytime we can have a piece of equipment that saves staff time, and saves the potential for injury, and just makes life better, like, I think we should take advantage of that, for sure. We're having trouble enough trying to fill staff positions, rather than expect people to be seeding by hand, when we could just have an auto hydro seeder, and then just be done with it. Counselor Najin?
Just to get a better idea, because I'm struck by the difference between Public Works and the Police Department, as far as, like, take-home vehicles. How many vehicles in the fleet are sent home with people, like, on an average?
So, right now, we have a on-call person for highway, we have an on-call person for water and sewer, we have an on-call person for the electrical division. During winter ops, you'll see a supervisor from highway, normally assigned for that role, to come in and, and respond to the storm. There's a unit, comes with the Public Works Director, so I have a unit right now, and there are a couple other, I think the Electrical Superintendent has one as well, because he's coming out in the middle of the night, check on streetlights, treff on traffic signals. So, it's anytime you have, am I missing one?
Pump station.
And then we have a pump station on-call person that's on the wastewater side and drinking water side.
Well, that, that all makes sense, I mean, if we have a, an emergency of any scale, it just, it is interesting that we handle the different departments differently.
Yep, and two of, three of those are, well, some of the on-call is an emergency dig save, so, the water and sewer, and the electrical, for example, depending on what's going on, they need to come in and do an emergency dig save, so, some of those aren't even related to what we're doing, but we need to be responsive.
Makes sense, I mean, if a, if a pipe breaks on, on, on Main Street at 1:15 in the morning, you know, yeah, I get it.
Counselor Chittam.
Yes, did we figure out what the difference is between what's listed in the LCIP and what's listed here under the fund balance, the roughly $100,000?
I've looked through all my emails, I don't happen to have it saved in there, I can go through it again tomorrow and see if I can find which one was removed.
Thank you.
In, in regards to the municipal garage vehicle list here, do we have any concerns about any of the vehicles being suggested? Counselor Herman?
I just wanted to make sure that we end up putting the, the items that were taken out back in, the difference that Director Roy was just talking about.
You're gonna track that down tomorrow?
I'm gonna track that down tomorrow.
Okay. Counselor Chittam?
So, we are then looking at 1.3 million instead of 1.2, is that right, for our thumbs-up-down tonight? Okay.
Thank you. Are we, are we, how are we feeling? All right, we are now up to public restroom. Deputy Director Bates, please join us at the front here.
So, I, this is, this was in past years with previous council, this iteration is something that Deputy Director Bates put together. We're looking at seven locations. We have one small little image for you, on what it looks like, we have several pictures we can send you, on what the example is that we've used to estimate, and I'll let you take it.
Do you mind passing that around, or?
So, the discussion about public restroom started prior to 2018, some of us were around when we heard about the Portland Lou at a Portland organ, and it was like, well over $100,000. So, the former Public Works Director, Brancheck, myself, and Louis Turcot went to the city of Portland, where they have 30 public restrooms, but not all of them are these fabricated ones, but they, and I can't tell you how many they do have of these, but I could find that out. These restrooms are fabricated out of a company, from a company in Sacol, Maine, and they run about 32,000. They include a Sharps container, trash can, toilet paper dispenser, exterior restroom sign, breakaway interior door latch, toilet seat, and a vent pipe. They have installed, and will do the same, a solar light, and they would be installed on top of a ADA concrete pad about nine by 15. When we visited Portland, what I thought was really unique about these bathrooms is, they don't stick out like a sort them. You can walk by, right by them, and they kind of meld right into the landscape. If you look at them, they look really nice, but someone might have to point out, if you're looking for one, and you'd be like, oh, yeah, that's a bathroom. Much nicer than the porta-potties that you see that are gray, or the aqua blue, they're just a, a nice-looking public restroom. And, yeah, that's about all that I have to share with you. In the LCIP sheet, it does list the locations, I can do that for you this evening, but these are proposed, so, this would be, obviously, council recommendation, if, if there is something that you would rather see, if you would, were to approve these.
Yeah, can you just, since you're here, can you just list us out the locations, please?
Sure, and I also have a map, I can, I believe I do, maybe I don't. Sorry, hold on a minute. Here we go. Yeah, also, the, the price of these includes a septic tank, 1,500 gallon, including the design permitting and sign-offs, and the permit is like a one-page, and speaking with the company, it's a pretty simple process to go through. So, Oak, Oak at Park, near the Oak Street Garage, Lincoln Street Railroad Alley, excuse me, I'm losing my voice, Smart Payne Park, near the Fitness Court, Whipple Winter, or Sunnyside Park area, College Street, Pettingill School Park, Cedar, Cedar River, Lionel Potvin Park area, and Bartlett Street, near or in Mike McGraw Park. Again, those are proposed.
Questions from the council? Counselor Sol?
I have a couple of questions. My first question is, what, do you know what the cost is to have those not cleaned, but pumped?
Yes, so, it would be 12,600 annually, that's for each of them to be pumped.
As many times as they need, or is it?
We're looking at once a year.
Really?
They're 1,500 gallon tanks.
Now, however, I'd like to add that, you know, we, we did ask for a custodial position in the Public Works Buildings. That position, if all five were put in, would, would go around, just make sure that those were cleaned. If, if we get one, we still need to clean one. We would still ask for that position, because the existing staff is just not there. This person would clean that one, and then augment Public Works Buildings staff, crew, to do everything that they're trying to do to keep up with this space and other public building spaces, so.
Well, my next question is about how many. How did you come up with the number seven, and can we maybe cut that in half as a trial period, to see how they?
We could, but, like, the director just said, you still need that one person.
Right, but as far as.
To maintain them.
That's a lot of money for toilets, so if we go and we do all seven at once, and they don't really work out, I don't know why they wouldn't work out, but.
Yeah, also, I'll say this, again, Portland is continuously adding, so they are up to 30 public restrooms, and they have a staff of three. They do get paid a little bit more because of the biohazard, and, I can't, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought, but, they, oh, yes, they also are getting their own pump truck, so they're gonna be fully sufficient.
And who will empty the, the biohazard, like, the, you said that there was a needle drop, is that what?
We, we're trying to do the Sharps containers, we do that already.
Okay.
But as far as the tanks themselves, we'll hire a company to do that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Najin?
Just real quickly, and, and this isn't, this isn't really a criticism, but I would rather see these bathrooms be amenities in parks, where they're, where they're able to be looked at, like, basically be visible. The, the Oak Street proposal would be in the parking garage, I take it?
There's a green space there, in front of the park, on the parks, on the Oak Street side.
So, it'd be accessible for DeFrain, for instance?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks, that's it.
Counselor Chittam?
Thank you. I like Counselor Sol's idea, and I would propose that we start with three, and follow Portland's model, and see how those three work, and as, each year, we can add one or two. I understand that this is the straw that, that broke the camel's back in terms of employees, adding a person to Public Works staff to handle this, and then in the off-hours, the off-hours when restrooms aren't being cleaned, and that's a supplement to the regular labor force at PW, I get that. The 12,600 you talked about was for pumping seven, that's 1,800 bucks a pop annually for pumping, so that, that cost would be reduced similarly, so, I would advocate that we start with three.
Can I see the map again? Who has it? Thank you. So, how many public restrooms do we have in the city right now, Director Gagne?
I believe we have zero.
Right, and so, you know, it's not like we're, we're starting from zero, and I think, you know, to leverage the, the, you know, the cost of the employee, and, you know, these are all in spaces that are gonna be used by, by kids, families, and, and by me, when I walk down Smart Payne Park. You know, we don't have, we don't have restroom facilities now, and if we're thinking about, you know, creating spaces that people can use, and thinking about, you know, having public access to bathrooms as a basic human right, I, I don't see why we wouldn't just, like, add seven. Like, we don't, I mean, it's a bathroom, we don't need to see how it works, it's working right now in Portland, they have 30, and, yeah, I, I think this just makes an enormous amount of sense, for a lot of reasons. And I'm concerned that Director, I'm sorry, Administrator O'Malley, can you, well, I, you could also speak to that, Director Gagne, but we've had to go through garages where people have relieved themselves, can you go over that again, Administrator O'Malley?
Yeah, that's kind of what the folks at Public Works are dealing with, that there is human feces throughout our stairwells of the, the parking garages. And indoorways, we've had complaints of.
Stairwells, yeah, everywhere.
Stairwells, doorways, and whatnot. I mean, we've had issues, you know, with the rec department, when they have their camp during the summertime, you know, they're up at Pettingill School Park, there are no facilities there. I know, in the past, one of the neighbors has actually rented a porta potty, so I think.
Wait, say that again?
One of the neighbors has rented a porta potty and placed it up at Pettingill School Park in the past, and to Counselor Najin's point, these are end locations in parks, so it would be up to you folks, how many you want to fund, but, you know, if we're talking McGraw Park, Pettingill, Smart Payne, you know, for DeFrain Plaza, I mean, we're rarely kind of using these as destinations, and I would say that not having any public restrooms is a deterrent to having people come into our city.
Counselor Herman?
Thank you. I think I mentioned it at one of our previous ones, but just a couple anecdotes from Lisbon Street businesses that have actually now since closed. At Tracy Jeans, I was there once, and the owner was very upset that someone had come and peed in their, their doorway, and then I was at Rusty Bus Brewing a week or so ago, and Peter was bragging about how long the hose was from the, the brewing room, that he could take it out the door and hose down the, the feces that was outside. So, it's, it's certainly an issue for, you know, especially our downtown area, I think.
Counselor Chittam?
Thank you. I, I'm not, I'm, I'm gonna harp on this, we have zero public facilities now, so adding one is an infinite increase in the number of facilities that we have. Adding three, adding seven, adding 12, I mean, we're, we're talking money here, the difference between what's proposed here, $350,000, and Counselor Sol's, and, and my suggestion to cut it back to three is $200,000. We have none now, and for us to go from zero to seven, again, I'm, I'm thinking of the people who are paying their taxes, $200,000 is, is a chunk of change. Thank you.
Counselor Longchamp?
I was just wondering, do we know how many Portland started off with?
I can find that out, but I don't have that, no.
You don't have it now.
Counselor Nate, or, sorry, one second, Counselor Galant?
Thank you. If we go with a reduced number, can we go with the same amount of pads? Because I know they can be moved, correct? They're not, they're not, are they anchored to the ground?
They're like six by 15, so, I wouldn't really want to be moving those around.
Probably a cast-in-place pad.
A cast-in-place, I wasn't sure of that.
Yep.
Okay, I, I just was wondering, because one time before, we talked about having something, that if we had an event like the balloon festival, we could move a couple in that general area, and I wasn't sure if that was still the case in that particular process, so that's why I was wondering. And I would offer up that we could let the art people paint them, you know, I'd rather have that than fire hydrants.
Oh, can I?
Just to make sure they match in.
Can I mention something about that? These have a really nice, dark green finish, and even that, almost black, but dark green when the, when the sunlight hits them, they're very attractive.
Counselor Najin?
Just to point this out, so the seven, the seven toilets, or the seven bathrooms, there's like, seven wards. I'm sure every single one of you has spoken to somebody who has to go somewhere where there's no bathroom, right? Like, it's, it's a constant thing. The difference between Sunnyside Park and, and Smart Payne, the, the distance alone, like, it's, it's different populations being served in, in, in different ways. And, again, claiming our public spaces comes back to using our public spaces, and you're not gonna, like, I can't say you're not going to, but you're much less likely to get people spending a lot of time in any of our public parks when they don't have the ability to use the bathroom. Think about, like, a 75-year-old woman with, or man, or a couple, with, with like, a six-year-old grandson, like, or granddaughter, like, that's, that's perfect bathroom scenarios right there, so.
I'd just like to add to that, invariably, as soon as you get somewhere, the first thing that your child needs to do is use the restroom. Counselor Longchamp?
Oh my God, I'm losing my train of thought.
Please use your mic.
Oh, what was it?
Oh, but if you could use your mic.
Not right now.
Counselor Sol, yes?
So, I'm not against public bathrooms, I, I think they're important, and I, I would like to eventually see us have public bathrooms, but like Counselor Chittam said, it's $200,000, that's, that's a teacher's salary, that's a police officer, that's a firefighter, and so I just, those are things that I find that are more important than additional toilets, so. I mean, I, I do want to have public bathrooms, it's just, we have just such a big.
It's totally scalable and your choice.
Well, and just for the public's benefit, we're, we're not choosing between public restrooms and a police officer, or public restrooms and a teacher.
Yes, we are. It might be, we are, we're not gonna prove our position.
We, we have yet to get to that page. Counselor?
This is what it boils down to, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Chittam, yes, you're.
Decisions that we have to make.
I understand.
So, we are choosing between police and bathrooms, and firemen, and dump trucks, that's all what we're doing.
Counselor Longchamp, did you remember what you were going to say?
Yes. So, if we chose to have the seven bathrooms, if we voted on that, would they all go up this year?
I believe it can get done all in, in a year.
You believe?
Well, I've had, I've already had the fabricator call me, asking me if I had any information, so, I have no doubt that he can get them built. It's getting the tanks installed, and it's a lot of different companies, so it's not just dealing with one company.
My next question is, how did we come up with seven? Was it...
That I do not know.
I think this was initiated with a different Public Works Director and a different council, and I know there were a lot of discussions, actually even prior to Counselor, to Director Brancheck. Pretty sure they were having discussions. So I, this is where we're at, and if you want to hold, pause, change in a different direction, ask, you know...
No, I, I think they're important. I just, I just think that. I'm just wondering how we came up with seven. Did you happen to know, Administrator?
I believe when Director Brancheck was doing this, we were trying to cover parts of the, of the city, parts of, you know, parks where we've had requests for the porta-potties, locations that we've had issues, you know, but, you know, like DeFrain Plaza, we're trying to do a lot more down there, so we don't have a public restroom, you know, Pettingill Park, School Park. We have a lot of events that go on up there. We have a camp that goes, that runs up there in the summer, no restroom. So that was kind of, I think, where she went with that, was, you know, McGraw Park, you know, we're trying to get more folks there. You know, if you cut it down, you know, to three or four, we'll have to figure out where we want to, you know, put them, but my thoughts are, we do Samar Payne, we do Oak Street, we do, you know, our busier parks, no offense to Counselor Najin, but I think probably Sunnyside Park and McGraw probably wouldn't be the two, but he may differ with that, but we'd have to have some input. You know, we'd have to look at what we're getting for usage, but I would definitely think, you know, Samar Payne and DeFrain Plaza.
So would you agree with the seven bathrooms, or do you think we could cut it down to maybe five?
Yeah, I mean, we just, I mean, we have to cut. My first thought would be McGraw Park, because usually the folks that use that park live in that neighborhood, but if we're trying to get folks to use that soccer field, we have people coming from all over Lewiston and Auburn to use the fields, so where are they going to go to the restroom? They're probably going to use the woods. I'd rather have the woods than the stairways and, you know, the parking garages, but that's kind of my thought on that.
Yeah, I mean, to your point, Administrator O'Malley, there is not, there's not any extra restrooms on the map, like, they're all in...
That is correct.
Yeah, they're all in highly trafficked areas.
Thank you.
Obviously, some more than others. Counselor Najin?
Just to point this out, we actually did a count for foot traffic on our trails, and the, the most trafficked area would be Samar Payne Park, basically across the bridge, huge amount of traffic, absolutely, but over 500 people a day go down the Sunnyside, the Riverside Trail, and I don't know if you've ever seen like any of the, any of the information about like the mad poopers, like the people who run and...
I don't know if you've seen me. I run that trail, and I've seen them, yes.
Yeah, yeah. It's always, it's always good to have...
That's why I think we went with the seven to try to cover our high-traffic areas.
Counselors, counselors, thank you.
I'm just saying, anywhere where you would have the, the ability to attract people for space, I think is probably where you want it. You know what I mean? But that's, you, so...
Pettingill School Park gets a lot of usage, obviously DeFrain.
Counselors, thank you. Please continue, Counselor Najin. Okay, I would now like to recognize that. Counselor Roy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Roy, if we were to say yes to seven of this tonight, seven, seven of them tonight, and we go to new employees and all that stuff, and we decide like we'd rather have a new employee than seven bathrooms, can we make that change at that time?
Yes.
Thank you.
So as long as we get everything wrapped up on Thursday, if you guys decide when we're going over new programs, services, that you want something other than this, we could go back and adjust this.
Okay, and I think in the interest of time, I think we all, you know, recognize we need bathrooms, so let's kind of move on and say yes to this.
Now you're talking.
Any further thoughts from counselors? Okay, I guess we'll put a, put this in the parking lot for right a second.
So the next would be the leach cleaning and inspection for $110,000.
So this is for our, this is for our municipal landfills. There's...
I can, I can get that.
I've been there, so, so on our sewer side, we have regular maintenance cleaning. This is basically the perimeter drains and collection system of these capped landfills. So even though there's a cap, there's still leachate coming out of these. That's what this collection system is. Every two years, required regulatory to maintain compliance is, is what is scheduled, so not a lot of latitude on this one. We did some major cleaning last year and got the pump station working. We had a violation because of rain events, and that wasn't a leachate thing, so DEP is aware of the operation, and this is a critical one.
Counselor Herman?
Thank you. I guess if this is a, a normal thing that we do every couple of years, every two years, it seems like it's something that we could put in the budget, you know, put $55,000 every year, and then, and then spend it accordingly.
Talk with Director Roy, how if she wants to carry that over, mechanize that.
Counselor Chittam?
Every two years, is this the entire leachate system that's done every two years, or half of it every two years, so that it gets once every four, or what's the program?
The entire every other year.
Every other year, okay.
It's in our operations manual, and we were unable to do it last year because we are concentrating on the automated scale, so we're, actually, this will be our third year, so we really need to get it done.
No, no questions. Bill Butler isn't the DEP staff?
He is not there anymore.
Okay.
Nor is his wife.
I won't react.
Further questions about this?
These are contracted services, by the way, the same vendor of this.
Right. We're good with this, counselors?
Yep.
Does that wrap things up, Director Roy, or...
It does. So currently, with those adjustments, fund balance is down to $5,384,295. So with that being said, if we were to do 10% of fund balance, you have an additional $925,027 that you can use. And I understand that there are some counselors that want to go down to 8%. I just want to mention the fact that if there are any emergencies that come up within the year that we need funds for, that we don't have budgeted, if this is brought down to 8%, we would not have any funds to cover any emergency. So I just want to remind you of that, if you want to, to use up to the 8%.
Counselor Herman?
Thank you. So if it were brought, I'm just trying to understand how, how it works. If it were brought down to the 8% and then we had an emergency, we wouldn't use the 8% that's left, a portion of that, for the emergency?
It's, it's in there that you would all have to vote to go below the 8%, which I would not recommend.
So we'd have to vote to go below 8% at any point, whether it's now during the budget process, or later when we have to spend $1 million on an emergency item?
Right, so you would have to, you would have to have, I believe, I'd have to go back to it and read it, but you have to have a majority vote, I believe, to go below that 8%.
Thank you.
Counselor Chittam?
Just so I'm clear, as it stands right now, the fund balance stands at 5.3, 5.4 million?
Correct.
And if we reduce that by $927,000, we would be at the 10% level?
No, you have an additional $925,027 to use for fund balance to get to that 10% level. So you have an additional $925 that you could look at moving from LCIP to fund balance.
All right, is that added to or subtracted from the 5.38 million?
So the total for 10% for your, for fund balance would be the $5,384 plus the, the $925,27, so that would be $6,309.
Okay, so 6309 is 10%.
Correct.
All right, that's, that, thank you, that answers my question.
Anything else, Counselor Chittam?
No, thank you.
Counselor Najin, did you have something? Nope. Anybody else have anything? I think we're calling a, I think we're calling it a night. Anything further, or Counselor? What? Oh, Counselor Najin, did you have something?
The one piece that we didn't go over was revenues, so 90%, 95%, 100%. I don't know if we want to talk about it now, or wait.
At this point, I would say let's hold that off for Thursday.
Okay.
Administrator O'Malley, did you have anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. We're, we're now ending the budget workshop. Thank you all for everything, and good night, Lewiston. We'll see you back here on Thursday.
Thank you, staff.